Good evening. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Combined Work Session and Business Meeting for March 3rd. And we're going to start by calling this meeting to order and getting right into our opening ceremonies. So please stand.
Presenting our nation's colors tonight, our members of the Mount Pleasant High School Air Force JROTC and their personnel includes Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Armando Gomez, Cadet First Lieutenant Justin Scott, Cadet First Lieutenant William Farrell, and Cadet Senior Master Sergeant Aiden Whitley.
Ready, wheel. Free set, arms.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars do the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Arms.
Cox Mill Elementary School Chorus under the direction of Ms. Jen Archer and Mr. Tim Price. Thank you.
You may be seated. So before we set our agenda, we'll just do the introductions of the folks here on the dais. So we have our Teacher of the Year Caleb Snell. We have Board Member Shannon Lancaster, Board Member Catherine Moore, Board Member Sam Tredaway, our Superintendent Dr. John Kupicki, myself Rob Walter, Board Chair, Greg Mills, our Vice Chair, Board Member Pamela Escobar, and Board Member Melanie Freeman. So with that, we will go on to Item 3.1, which is adopting our agenda for tonight. So Board Members have had an opportunity to review. It's on Board Docs, so I would need a motion and a second to approve our agenda tonight. A motion by Mr. Tredaway.
Second.
Second by Ms. Escobar. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, we have set our agenda for the night, and we will get right into the recognition. So 4.01 is our Impact Through Education Awards, and we're going to welcome Mr. Phil Furr to the podium.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Kupicki, good evening. Tonight, we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Coltrun Webb STEM Elementary School and Northwest Cabarrus STEM Middle School. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable. At this time, I would like to invite our Equitable representative Emily Satterley to join me at the front of the room. Before we get started with the awards, please accept our sincere thanks and gratitude to Equitable for its continued sponsorship of the Impact Through Education Awards. Tonight, we continue our 15th year of honoring those making an impact in our schools with this award. We appreciate your support, and thank you for helping us celebrate and recognize deserving students and staff. We also want to say a word of thanks to our Cabarrus Regional Chamber and to the Concord Trophy Center for providing us with the award plaques each month. Now on to tonight's awards. May I have the Coltrun Webb Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from Coltrun Webb is Dylan Padilla Rodriguez. Dylan, please come forward with your family. Dylan, a fifth grader at Coltrun Webb STEM Elementary, exemplifies perseverance, leadership, and kindness. Since joining Coltrun Webb in second grade, he has worked tirelessly to grow academically, even becoming multilingual to support his peers. His dedication fosters a collaborative and supportive school community. A natural leader, Dylan serves on safety patrol, assists classmates, and volunteers whenever needed. His positivity and respect make him a role model, uplifting all those around him. Dylan's kindness and commitment extend beyond the classroom, as he is also a caring and responsible big brother, always looking out for his younger sister on the bus and helping her navigate school life. His actions exemplify the values of service, integrity, and empathy, making him an outstanding role model for his peers. Congratulations, Dylan. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Coltrun Webb STEM Elementary School. Axel, please come forward with your family. Axel, a fourth grader at Coltrun Webb STEM Elementary, exemplifies initiative, hard work, humility, and respect, making a positive impact on his school community. His kindness shines through in everything he does, from supporting peers during the reindeer games to leading by example in the Battle of the Books team. Despite not speaking Spanish, he actively supports students who are learning English, ensuring they feel included and have the assistance they need to thrive. His patience and kindness create a welcoming environment where everyone feels valued. Axel's humility, respect, and dedication make him a role model for all. Whether interacting with classmates or teachers, his warmth and positivity shine through, fostering an inclusive and supportive atmosphere. Congratulations, Axel. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Coltrun Webb STEM Elementary School. Ms. Hunter serves as an instructional teacher assistant at Coltrun Webb STEM Elementary School and has served the Coltrun Webb community for her entire career. First as an EC Resource Teacher, and now returning from retirement as an instructional teacher assistant. For years, Lois has been a constant source of support, kindness, and dedication at Coltrun Webb. She embodies the qualities of an exceptional support staff member, going above and beyond to ensure both students and staff feel valued and supported. Her commitment to the school's success is evident in everything she does, from her daily interactions to the countless ways she contributes behind the scenes. Lois's unwavering dedication has made a profound difference in the lives of so many. Whether offering a helping hand, a listening ear, or a warm smile, she makes Coltrun Webb a better place each and every day. Congratulations, Lois. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner at Coltrun Webb STEM Elementary School. Ms. Steele, please come forward with your family. Ms. Steele serves as a school social worker shared between Coltrun Webb STEM Elementary School and Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Ms. Steele received several nominations from colleagues. There is no social worker quite like Ms. Steele. She knows both students and staff by name, builds meaningful connections, and goes above and beyond to advocate for students' needs. As our school social worker, Nikki plays a vital role in supporting students and ensuring their well-being. She actively engages with parents, provides unwavering support for families, and works tirelessly to remove barriers to student success. Whether managing the food bag program or making sure students have warm clothing for the winter, she continuously finds ways to meet the needs of those she serves. One morning, a student mentioned not having a hat and gloves for the cold weather. By the end of the day, Nikki had already provided them. Beyond meeting physical needs, Nikki's kindness and dedication create a safe and welcoming environment where all students feel valued. She makes Coltrun Webb a better place every single day through her tireless advocacy, her selfless commitment, and her deep care for their students. She is truly a difference maker, and Coltrun Webb is better because of her. Congratulations, Nikki. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Coltrun Webb STEM Elementary. Cabarrus STEM Middle School. May I have the Northwest Cabarrus Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from Northwest Cabarrus STEM Middle School is Truman Puckett. Truman, please come forward with your family. We're proud to recognize Truman as a recipient of the Impact Through Education Award for Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. A standout student and role model, he exemplifies wisdom, maturity, and dedication in both academics and music. Truman's strong work ethic, intelligence, and kindness make a lasting impact. He supports his peers, fosters collaboration, and continuously seeks improvement. Beyond academics, Truman's dedication to music is evident. He actively seeks mentoring from our band teacher, shares his talents with others, and helps younger students succeed. Always respectful, thoughtful, and humble, he never seeks recognition but consistently uplifts those around him. We're honored to celebrate his achievements and his bright future. Congratulations, Truman. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Northwest Cabarrus STEM Middle School. Caitlin, please come forward with your family. We're proud to recognize Caitlin as a recipient of the Impact Through Education Award for Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. A dedicated and hard-working student, she is a role model known for her kindness, respect, and positive attitude. Caitlin is an engaged learner who actively participates, asks insightful questions, and collaborates with peers. Her enthusiasm and creativity make her a standout in the classroom. Caitlin's vibrant spirit and outgoing nature make her a joy to be around. Well-liked by her peers, her infectious enthusiasm lifts everyone up, whether she's leading a project or supporting others. She truly embodies what it means to be a Titan: hard-working, kind, and committed to making a positive impact. We celebrate Caitlin's achievements and look forward to her continued success. Congratulations, Caitlin. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Northwest Cabarrus STEM Middle School. Next, from Northwest Cabarrus is staff member Shep Maya Israel. Mr. Israel, please come forward with your family. We proudly recognize Mr. Shep Maya Israel as a support staff recipient of the Impact Through Education Award for Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. His influence extends far beyond his role as testing coordinator, making a lasting impact on students and staff alike. With his calm and kind demeanor, Mr. Israel brings energy to our school, always willing to lend a hand. His attention to detail ensures smooth testing operations, and his problem-solving skills keep everything running seamlessly. As a coach, mentor, and role model, he inspires student athletes, guiding them towards success on and off the court. His dedication, professionalism, and unwavering support make him an invaluable part of Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. We're honored to celebrate his contributions. Congratulations, Shep Maya. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. Ms. Collins, please come forward with your family. We proudly recognize Ms. Stacy Collins as the Certified Staff Recipient of the Impact Through Education Award for Northwest Cabarrus STEM Middle School. Her dedication to students, colleagues, and the Northwest Cabarrus community is unwavering. Ms. Collins goes above and beyond to support her students, pushing them to succeed while ensuring they feel seen and valued. A true team player, she is always the first to volunteer when needed, offering reliable and compassionate support to both students and staff. Her calm and collected demeanor fosters trust, helping students build meaningful relationships with her while colleagues deeply value her insights. As a lead mentor, she plays a vital role in guiding new teachers, ensuring their success. Her impact is immeasurable, and we're grateful for her contributions to Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. Congratulations, Stacy. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. Congratulations to all our recipients, and thanks again to our partners, Equitable and the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce for your partnership.
Well-deserved recognitions. Thank you, Mr. Furr. Our next item is 4.02, which is the Hillbush Teacher of the Year, or Teacher of the Month. We have Dr. Michael Williams here with us. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Board members, Dr. Kupicki, and to our viewing audiences both here and watching the livestream. It is my pleasure to recognize our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for March. We always begin by expressing our sincere thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their tremendous generosity and continued sponsorship of this wonderful recognition program. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for March is Jody Bennett, a health and PE teacher at CC Griffin STEM Middle School. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Bennett, her family, and any members of the CC Griffin STEM Middle School Administrative Team in attendance to please come forward. Ms. Bennett, you received nominations from 10 students. Tonight, I want to share excerpts of two of those nominations. First student said, "Mrs. Bennett has always been nice to all of her students and is a great person in general. When I was going through some bad things in life, she has always been there to listen, to care, and is a great role model for everyone. Even when the class is not listening, she does not yell at us or ridicule us. She just guides us in the right path." The second student said, "Ms. Bennett is funny, kind, and is always there for you. She cares about not just teaching, but she cares about us as students as well. She's selfless and will teach us not only about health but also to be kind, good humans. I love her so much, and I hope she can get recognized for her good deeds and who she is." Ms. Bennett, thank you for the impact you've made to teach, engage, and inspire the students in your classroom. Congratulations on your selection as Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
We're going to move on to our next recognition, which is 4.03, the Everyday Hero Award winner. It's a winner, and we have Dr. Jonathan Bowers with us, and Ms. Amber Diggins, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening to you, members of the board, and Dr. Kupicki. Once again, it is certainly my pleasure to stand before you tonight to be able to recognize this month's Everyday Hero Award recipient. Joining me here is Ms. Amber Diggins. She is our Director of our Kids Plus program. And certainly, just to kind of capture what this award means and what this word symbolizes, this is an award that is intended to capture the true spirit of what it means to be a hero. Sponsored by Great Wolf Lodge, the recipient of this month's award is someone who has consistently, they've gone above and beyond. They touch the lives of so many people daily, and they do this through acts of kindness, dedication, and commitment. Our honoree is not one who seeks recognition or applause, but one who finds joy in making a difference, no matter how big or how small. Whether it's through putting in extra hours, supporting those in need, motivating others with a can-do attitude, this individual should serve as a source of inspiration for us all. I'm going to ask that Ms. Michelle Hodge and any special guest with her, come join us It should be noted that Ms. Hodge's tireless efforts have not only impacted the lives of numerous students, but they've also reminded us of the power of compassion and the impact that one person can have. It is with great admiration and great gratitude that we present this month's award to her and for the service she provides to those at WR Odell Elementary School. Joining me here tonight is Ms. Amber Diggins, and she is going to speak to you as to why Ms. Hodge was chosen as this month's worthy recipient.
Thank you, Dr. Bowers, and good evening, everyone. It truly is an honor to be standing here to present this Everyday Hero Award to someone whose dedication, positivity, and genuine care make her an invaluable member of the school community. In our mid-year feedback survey, when families were asked to share their experience, one child shared that they were absolutely ecstatic to get moved to Ms. Michelle's group. And this is just the beginning of a long line of praise that Ms. Michelle received and how deeply she connects with the children she works with. The children shared that she is fun, funny, and fair. She's known for her positivity and caring nature, but what truly sets her apart is how she is present with the kids. She's not just their leader, she's a mentor and a friend. She's someone who makes a lasting impact on each child's life. Recently, I shared an email exchange that I had received from a former Kids Plus student in Ms. Michelle and her site coordinator, Ms. Amanda. The experiences and relationships that they have helped cultivate are truly awe-inspiring. Ms. Michelle has a remarkable ability to make learning and play come alive for the kids. Whether she's planning engaging activities or reading a captivating chapter book with them, she creates an environment where the kids are excited to participate, to learn, and to grow. And one parent said it perfectly, "Ms. Michelle is positive and caring. She has a unique talent of relating to the children and keeping them engaged and turning everyday moments into unforgettable experiences." The children absolutely love that she's not only their leader, but also someone who takes the time to play with them. Whether it's teaching them new games or helping them develop critical thinking and strategy skills, she fosters both fun and learning in every activity. She encourages them to think critically, to build confidence, and to learn valuable life lessons, always in a safe and supportive environment. But her impact goes beyond her interactions with the kids. She's also a beloved member of the entire school community at Odell. She's often seen helping out in the front office with the staff and the teachers. She's often seen helping out in the front office with the staff and the teachers, the custodians, whether it's lending a hand or just offering a warm smile. She truly embodies the spirit of teamwork and service. Her servant heart is clear to all who work with her. She's always among the first to volunteer when a need arises, and she's known to arrive early and stay late to make sure everything runs smoothly. A prime example is her dedication to how she assists Ms. Beverly with the 4-H workshops, always helping with setup and cleanup without hesitation, and rallying her coworkers to do the same. Ms. Michelle's willingness to support others is a testament to her character. It's no surprise that she's loved and respected by everyone she works with. She's a shining example of what it means to be an everyday hero, someone who shows up each day with enthusiasm, dedication, and a heart full of care for others. Michelle, on behalf of all of us, the children, our colleagues, all of their families, congratulations. You truly deserve this.
Our last recognition for this evening is going to be item 4.04, the School Counselor of the Year, and we're going to welcome Ms. Karen Holler to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kavicki. I'm honored to be here tonight to introduce Cabarrus County Schools' School Counselor of the Year, Melissa Cahal. At this time, I'd like to ask Melissa to come forward with her family, as well as Principal of Patriots STEM Elementary School, Amy Peters. A school counselor is a guide, a mentor, and a champion for students. To them, counselors are a safe space, a trusted adult who listens, encourages, and believes in them. Melissa Cahal embodies all of this and more. Melissa is the school counselor at Patriots STEM Elementary School, where she is a leader, not just in her school, but within our district, within our state, and within our nation. She has led important work around character education and initiatives that foster an environment where every child can thrive. Her leadership helped her school become the first school in our district to earn the Positivity Project's Green Shield Award, which they have now earned for the second year in a row. This year, Melissa also led her school in becoming a North Carolina State School of Character, a recognition that is granted for a school's commitment to the 11 principles of character. And this past summer, Melissa was chosen to be a presenter at the Positivity Project's Annual Conference, which pulls in leaders from across the United States. Melissa is the definition of an effective school counselor, making a lasting impact on the students she serves and the team she works alongside. She is deeply respected by her school community, not just for the work she does, but for the heart she puts into it. She loves this profession, and it shows in the relationships she builds and the difference she makes every single day. Her compassion, innovation, and commitment to student success models what an effective school counselor should be. For these reasons and so many more, I am incredibly proud to present Melissa Cahal as our Cabarrus County Schools' 2025 School Counselor of the Year.
All right, so board members, our next item here is the approval of our minutes, and do want to thank our board clerk for working really hard to get those together to us for last month. We had a busy month, there were three meetings. There was a meeting, a work session on February 2nd, we had a business meeting on February 10th, and a legislative meeting on February 17th. We've all had time to look over these minutes, and if everything is in order, I'd need a motion and a second to approve those minutes.
Unless someone saw something I didn't see, I would approve, I would move that we approved those minutes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Moore. Okay, with that, let's vote. All in favor of approving our minutes for our three February meetings? Please say aye. Aye, anybody opposed? Okay, the minutes have passed. So with that, we'll move on to our next section, which is Board, Chair, and Superintendent Comments. I don't have a lot, but I do want to make sure that the community and the public know that you have a board that is engaged. This board is active. They're in the schools, they're attending performances and competitions, obviously attending more than just board meetings, extra meetings, community meetings, legislative meeting. And this month, we actually have another meeting with board training on March 25th, which is also a public meeting. Greg and I, I guess, have attended some arts performances, so that's another really thing I'd like to highlight, is shout out to the talented students, the teachers, and the efforts that they put into these performances and festivals. We have a, we've seen, we saw the, what was it, the band, the middle school, middle school, all county band, saw a play at Royal Oaks, lots of other things that are going on, but really thanks to the folks who are putting on these performances for our community, the artwork, visual artwork, the choruses. And I do want to encourage everyone to, we have an annual Youth Arts Festival, and that's held this year on April 11th. I really encourage everyone to attend that. I'm sure there's details on that on our website. And lastly, just to give a shout out to our Vex Robotics teams, and teachers, and students, and parents that have worked really hard this season. State championships are coming up this month on March 14th through 16th, right here in Concord, so congratulations to those that'll be participating in that. And with that, I will hand it over to Dr. Kavicki for his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. As we approach the end of the third quarter and next week's spring break, I want to take a moment to thank our students, staff, and families for their hard work, dedication, and commitment to our schools. The past few months have been filled with learning, growth, and achievements, and I'm incredibly proud of all that we have accomplished together. Spring break is a well-deserved opportunity to relax, recharge, and spend time with family and friends. Whether you are traveling, enjoying a staycation, or simply taking a break from your daily routine, I hope this time brings you joy and rejuvenation. Please take this time to rest and return refreshed for the final stretch of the school year. I look forward to seeing all the great things we will achieve together in the coming months as we prepare to complete another school year and celebrate our graduates in May. Again, to our teachers, I thank you sincerely for all the work and dedication that you do. It is always refreshing to visit our schools and see the wonderful work that is taking place in our classrooms and the work that our teachers are doing and engaging with their students. We have the finest teachers in all, I say, the nation, and I think you in Cabarrus County know that through the witnessing of what you see and the outcomes that your students continue to perform. Mr. Walter alluded to a little bit, but the Vex Robotics program is a great example of some of the successes that we have here and how well our kids do. Just one example of what they do and how they succeed. I encourage everyone to take a walk through the hallway this evening when they leave. Mr. Walter alluded to the art show that'll be coming up. You will see a lot of that artwork represented it out in the hallways that is out there. That's our student work. And again, exemplifies the excellence that are here of our students and the teachers who instruct them every day, so I thank them for that again. Please take some time to look at some of that artwork this evening. Reminder that all traditional schools will have early dismissal this Friday, March 7th, and all Cabarrus County Schools are closed to students from March 10th to 14th for spring break. Our job fair is going to be held April 12th, so please mark your calendars, and that will be held from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Winkler Middle School. The doors will open at 10:00 a.m. for all prospective employees. All 44 schools and the Cabarrus County Schools departments will be on site to provide information, recruit, and hire on that day. Our State Superintendent, Mo Green, North Carolina's new Superintendent of Public Instruction, is coming to our district next month as part of his statewide listening and learning tour. This is a public event that will be held on March 26th at 6:00 p.m. at Harold Winkler Middle School. Drawing on the insight gathered during these sessions, the North Carolina Department of Instruction and the State Board of Education will draft a comprehensive strategic plan for the state that includes goals, initiatives, and accountability measures. For information and to register for the event, please visit the news section of our school district homepage. This week, we proudly recognize and celebrate our incredible school social workers. These dedicated professionals play a vital role in supporting students' well-being, providing resources, guidance, and advocacy to help them succeed in and out of the classroom. Their compassion and commitment make a lasting impact on our schools and community. Please join us in thanking our school social workers for all they do to support students, families, and staff every day. Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Dr. Kavicki. So we will move on to our next item, which is our guest speakers, have the opportunity to address the board. We have two speakers that have signed up. They have given a copy of the policy and the expectations. Those are also here on board docs if you want to see them. They essentially have three minutes to speak. So I will call up the first speaker, and that would be Deborah Allen. Are you here? There she is, welcome.
Good evening to everybody who came out tonight and to everybody at home. I am Deborah Allen, and this evening, I would like to talk to everybody about the increase in class size and the importance of maintaining a reasonable teacher, student-teacher ratio to maximize learning. The legislative guidelines are not fixed for class. That means it can fluctuate based on an increase or a decrease in enrollment. It costs more to educate a child within a small class size, but what are the costs to our county and state if we continue to ignore the data and cram classrooms? We need to stop rubber-stamping federal initiatives. The wasting of taxpayer funding needs to stop. We spend a lot of money on public education, but is the money being allocated efficiently and effectively to improve learning? We spend millions to build new schools, to pay for administrative costs, and ablating administration. One administrator's average salary could hire two experienced teachers and thus reduce the number of students in each class. North Carolina only sets class size restrictions for grades K to 3, and our middle schools have about 30 students per class. Additionally, in many of those classes, there is a percentage of students who have IEP mandates. In Boston, when a class has below 6.5% of the students with an IEP, the class is set at 25 students. If a class has above 6.5%, that number is reduced to 23 students. We must consider the most productive way to use the educational dollars we have allocated. Teaching our students is the most important gift we can offer. We say we treasure our teachers. We saw so many beautiful awards given out today to really effective teachers and staff, but how do we support them? Teachers do not want to call an administrator to deal with disruptive students. It makes them feel ineffective. Many of our teachers find ways to manage among their teams. Sometimes administrators are unavailable, and teachers have no other recourse than to deal with the disruption directly. Since redistricting, class sizes have increased, as has teacher absence. Is this a random coincidence? We must offer various solutions to retain good teachers. I firmly believe reducing class size is a valid solution. The STAR Program, Student-Teacher Achievement Ratio, which is a study that was done in Tennessee, found that decreasing class size by seven students increased student achievement by about three additional months of schooling. Smaller class size has significant long-term effects on student achievements. Although the limit is set currently at 30 students at grade 7, when you multiply this by four class periods, those middle school teachers are responsible for 120 students. Our district may be in compliance, but we are certainly busting at the seams, and our teachers are feeling the load. I'm just about done. Class size and teacher salaries must be considered if we are serious in recruiting and retaining dedicated teachers to improve the education of our children. We now have the opportunity to consider all best possible solutions to help our children. Thank you.
Do you have a handout of what you presented, or you want to give that to us?
I just have my notes.
You can email it to us.
Oh, yes, I will, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Russell Wright. Are you here today? Welcome.
All right, am I live here? Yes, okay. Good evening, everyone. Earlier this year, we witnessed a significant decision, the consequences of which has raised serious concerns about fairness and transparency here in Cabarrus County. The County Commission, working alongside members of this school board, appointed someone with a clear conflict of interest, someone whose close personal ties to certain members of leadership conned to question the integrity of the process. Our school should not be a place for political maneuvering. They should be focused on students, teachers, and families, not personal agendas. But instead of prioritizing what's best for our schools, this decision was made in a way that erodes public trust and raises doubts about whose interests are truly being served. But I guess for some of you, the thoughts and opinions of someone like me, a Cabarrus County resident with two children currently in the school system, doesn't mean nearly as much as whatever agenda certain members of leadership are wanting you to enact. To those who played a role in this appointment, regardless of whether you are a member of the County Commission, who are probably watching this right now, or the school board, I urge you to reflect. Leadership is not about control, it's about service. One day, you may look back and realize that power is fleeting, but integrity is forever. And when that day comes, I hope you ask yourselves, was it worth it? Was it worth compromising trust in order to push through this assignment? To the school board members who may have felt maybe pressured into this vote, we recognize the difficult position you were likely put into, but leadership requires standing firm, even when it's hard, and even when it may alienate you from those you align with. Decisions have consequences, and trust once broken is not easily repaired. Finally, to the people of Cabarrus County, do not lose faith. Stay engaged, keep paying attention. The future of our schools depends on those who are willing to hold leadership accountable for their actions. Elections will come soon, and when they do, make sure you remember whose actions showed they chose to serve by putting students and teachers first, as well as those whose actions showed they were only interested in wielding power and forcing what they believe is their God-given authority over others. Integrity matters. Transparency matters, and the voices of this community matter. Let's make sure all the voices in this county are heard, and not just the ones who sit in power that you want, or perhaps are forced, to listen to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. We will move on to our next item, which will be our committee reports. And I know we've had a lot of meetings in the past month. I've attended a couple of the committees as well. I guess I'll let start on one, Shannon, do you want to start? So just to allow, tell us what committees that you attended or anything you want to add.
Okay, I am the liaison for the Cabarrus County Education Foundation, and I'm going to be meeting with them this week to get caught up on the great and wonderful things they are doing for our school system and students. The foundation has in place for over 25 years. If anyone is not aware of this foundation, you may go to their website for updates and more information. Personally, when I was a school teacher, I did receive several grants from this foundation, so they do do a great job supporting our schools and the students. And the second thing, Chairman Walter, I want to thank you for bringing back committees. To the best of my knowledge, I don't think we've had those for two years, and I think that's important to do that, and also I think it's important to give the public a way to provide feedback, so I think all these changes you were making are going in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Moore.
I attended last month the Student Health Advisory Committee, and it was good to see some familiar faces that I had worked with in the past, and also want to say I appreciate the representatives from the Cabarrus Health Alliance that gave up a Friday afternoon to come and meet with us to discuss students' health. This was the second meeting they had, and they were analyzing and doing an assessment over our policy that we just approved last month, 6140, the local wellness policy, and they were doing an assessment to make sure our policy is meeting all the federal regulations, which as a board member, I appreciate that. We want to be sure we're in compliance. Karen Holler certainly made me feel welcomed because she put me right in a group and put me right to work during Then, the next meeting is March 31st, and we will finish the assessment.
Thank you. Mr. Treadaway, you've probably signed up for the most committees, but...
Yeah, our safety committee, I guess ironically was not able to... (noise) Was ironically not able to meet because of unsafe conditions, because of the roads, but I do want to mention, it's not really a committee, but something that Gloria Wassell, for some of us know Gloria Wassell, is a strong advocate for Special Olympics, and that's coming up soon, April 9th and 10th. The first day is our middle school, high school, and adults. The second day is the elementary and preschool. And if you've never been to Special Olympics, you need to go. You need to go to Special Olympics. It is special in a special way. So, she wanted me to make everyone aware that Special Olympics, North Carolina, if you go to them on the webpage, you can volunteer, and they're still looking for volunteers.
Thank you. So, the two committees I've attended, we had a consortium of chairs and vice chairs for the Charlotte area. I think we had four other districts that attended that, and that was really about collaboration. And most of the meeting was focused on legislative issues, agendas, and we shared our legislative agenda with them. Did learn something, that I think that the School Board Association just has one lobbyist in Raleigh, and Charlotte actually has their own lobbyist as well, but we don't, that's about all that we've got, supporting public education in our area there in Raleigh. So, that was an interesting item. So, we'll meet them again, I guess sometime in April. And the other committee was our first inaugural finance committee, and we learned that we got a wonderful staff of 16 people in our finance department that run everything, and we learned a little bit about what they do. We reviewed our current budget situation, which we get to here in our next section of our agenda. We discussed locally funded positions. We talked about our budget calendar, and we talked about the annual audit that we do here at Cabarrus County Schools. So, I'll ask Greg if you want to give any updates.
Sure. I don't have much to report, but I will go ahead and say, on the legislative side, Jonathan Almond did put in the request for calendar flexibility, so you can see that on the legislative website right now. Grant Campbell was already co-signed onto a bill that will remove some of the barriers for retired teachers to come back to work here. And then, this week, we also heard from Brian Etcheveria. He has a bill that's currently with the legislative staff that drafts the bills. There's a lot of interesting pieces of that particular bill, but he says right now, they've got 25 people that are working on that, and they've got 2,000 bills that legislators are trying to put through right now. So, very anxious to see that particular bill show up in the committee soon.
Thank you. Ms. Husker.
Thank you. Our interns are busy, and they're working for the spring semester. I want to say thank you to Mr. Whitaker for giving a presentation on transportation last month, and then, we just had a presentation this afternoon from Dr. Williams and his team with HR, so we just want to thank our staff for working very hard, and also explaining to our students what it takes to run a school district of our size. An important part of the internship program is service and service projects, so we are working with our school social workers, but I also wanted to reiterate what Sam said, which is, Special Olympics, our students can volunteer for that, and so, that's an in-person opportunity, which again, is on April 9th and 10th. And another community partner is obviously the Boys and Girls Club, and one of the service projects, as a board, that we're going to be doing is participating in Pancake Day, so that's on March 20th. Another committee that Ms. Freeman and I are both on is Curriculum and Instruction. Tonight, you're going to get a presentation. We've had homework over the last few weeks, because we're evaluating a potential curriculum that we may adopt for our teachers. And so, we had the opportunity to review 78 titles that our students could be exposed to, and so, we each, the way that the Curriculum Instruction Committee is structured, it is made up of staff, both from the district, from schools, and also, parents, and then, as board members, were the two that serve on it, and so, we all had the opportunity to review these materials and send in feedback regarding how we felt about it. I will say that I was very impressed, and I learned some things, too. Learned history that I didn't even know. So, it was a great opportunity, and I'm looking forward to the presentation that we're going to get later tonight. The other committee that is new is Transportation. We were also supposed to meet last week, and that is being rescheduled to later this week, so I'll report back on that when we have that.
Like I said earlier, we appreciate all the extra time. It's way more than just two board meetings a month. Mrs. Freeman, what do you have for us?
I also, with Pam, attended the Curriculum Committee, and when you're just a normal person in the community, you don't realize all the working parts that go into this system. It is huge, and as a new member of the board, I just want you to know, I am drinking from a fire hose, and I appreciate the patience of the staff, because they have bent over backwards to bring us up to speed, so I really appreciate that. The Curriculum Committee will give a report tonight, so you'll see the efforts there. We also had a Finance Committee meeting, and I'm just going to say, as a person who only does her budget for her home, this is massive, and this is why it takes months for us to do a budget. So, please, please give your feedback. Pay attention to the websites. I know there are board docs and things that you also, as a stakeholder, as they call it, have access to. It's not just our information, it's your information, so please, give us the feedback that more eyes will see more things. So, we just really appreciate all the parents and the teachers and things that go into this work. And I think you have something to be proud of with the people, with the staff that works here, so I thank you for that. And yes, our legislative work is, I also attended that, and it is going fast, and they've hit the ground running, and that was very encouraging, that we don't have to wait for the can to get kicked down the road again. They're moving, so keep your eyes and ears open for all those updates, news-wise, and thank you for coming tonight, and those who are watching online. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, board members, for these updates. Appreciate that. Next item on our agenda is the report, which is our 8.02, which is our budget summary and budget report, and we have Mr. Phil Penn at the podium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. Kapicki. For those of you that attended last Thursday's Finance Committee meeting, some of this will be a bit repetitive, but I did want to give sort of an update on where we are. If we can just go to the first page of the memo, actually, scroll up a bit, sort of where we are compared to last month, and what I would note is, we've seen an improvement to the tune of about $2.1 million, and I bold pointed out sort of what the improvements are coming from. The biggest piece of that, roughly half, is an estimated healthcare cost trending about $980,000 lower than we expected. We always budget, assuming that every staff member takes the offered benefits. That's usually not the case, and to the extent they don't, that presents a savings to us. Utilities over the first six months of the year are running about $300,000 below where we anticipated they would be at this point, and for the full year, we have budgeted an increase of about 5.5%, and we know Duke just put through a rate decrease effective on January 1st, so our expectation is that will continue to get a little bit better through the end of the year. Interest income is about $50,000 higher than we expected it to be. Although our cash balances are lower, the interest rates have actually remained persistently high at this point, more so than we expected, so more than to offset the cash balance. The new ELA curriculum that you're going to hear about in a bit came in at $2.35 million, that's $450,000 less than the board had elected to put aside in the fund balance appropriation, which is obviously good news. We've gone through two additional rounds of budget cuts to the central office departments that have yielded savings of about $375,000, and we did receive some additional state funding for our EC students, thus reducing the expected deficit by about $100,000, and you may recall that head share of the year, it was north of $3 million, but at this point, we're going to get here going singles and doubles more than home runs, I think, so I'll take every little bit I can get to get to the number we're trying to reach. To that point, looking forward to the next few weeks, you know, for the past 45 days or so, we've been significantly pulling back on our hiring practices, and for the remainder of the year, I expect those are all going to be limited to situations where there's a compliance-related need, where the funding source of the hire doesn't correctly impact the current financial challenges, i.e. somebody paid by a federal grant, or somebody paid by the enterprise funds, school nutrition, or Kids Plus. Cabinet members are going back through their budgets once again to see if there's additional money that can be saved between now and the end of the year. I've already got two of those in hand. I expect more to come in in the next week or so. You know, and I have to say, there is some pretty significant savings to both the current year and the next year if the curriculum is adopted tonight, to the tune of about $400,000 to '24-'25, and to about $350,000 to '25-'26. And that would be in addition to the $450,000 I had already mentioned. You know, with the federal grant budget revisions completed, and we're going to talk about that on the budget amendment in a little bit here, one of the things we're going back through is to go through our indirect costs, to see how much of that we actually are expected to get now that those are finalized. Indirect costs, if you want to think about it as overhead, we're allowed to charge up to a certain percentage of our federal grants for the overhead cost. Indirect is something that's hard to measure on a per-person basis, right? A direct cost would be somebody's salary and their benefits, that's easy to measure. But the electricity that they consume, the water that they consume, the other resources they consume for being here are much more difficult to measure on a per-person basis, so there is an indirect cost charge that we then recover and can apply within our budget system. And of course, the punchline, as I've gotten asked a lot recently, do I think I can close the gap by the end of the year? And the candid answer is, I'm not sure yet. You know, we're still working our way through that. We have upwards of four months to go. The good news is, I've got a team that's fairly experienced in solving these issues, including myself. I have faced a deficit every year since I've been in municipal finance. This is not new territory. You know, so I'm hopeful that if we're committed to making sure that we're as aggressive as we can be in limiting the future expenditures through now the end of the year, and frankly, asking for a relief where it's warranted. If we need to go back to the county, for instance, to make up the difference on the fines and forfeitures, I think that's a particular area that's in the back of my mind that we may need to ask for, as we budget it based on their guidance. With that said, you know, we're continuing to work the problem. We have a, I'll correct the date, because we had to make some changes today. Our next big look at reforecasting the full year, instead of March 12th, will now be March 18th, as we had some internal scheduling conflicts with my team that we needed to get around, but that'll be the next time we go line item by line item through the budget to see where we are. You know, and I do expect to see some movement as a result of that effort as well. Questions?
Any questions for Mr. Penn?
Just to clarify, when you talk about the limitation on the hiring, that's not, is that student-facing? If we need EC teachers, if we need bus drivers, we're still definitely hiring for those positions.
I'm not going to say we're definitely hiring for those positions. EC would fall into the, something that's a, what's the term I used?
Compliance-related.
Compliance-related, right? So, we're not going to put ourselves in a position where we're generating more cost by not filling that role. But there are situations, for instance, that if we find that there's another way to fill the position or cover the need within the building, we may look to do that instead.
Okay.
So, to be pointed to...
Dr. Kapicki, speak to that, or to Greg.
No student will be harmed. If we need a teacher in a classroom, and we can't find one, and there's a need for a hire, we will make that hire. So, I just want to be clear about that. We're not looking to negate anything that would impact the classroom or a student in the classroom, so if that's the need, we will make sure to make the appropriate hire.
Has everybody got their questions asked? So, we'll look forward to another report. We have a finance committee next month, or next month, or the end of the month.
At the end of this month.
We'll talk about it then. So, thank you for the report. We'll move on. Well, before I do that, I did see our county commissioner, Laurie Lindsay, sneak into the room, so thank you for being here. And then, we also, our SRO for the night, Ms. Jennifer Burnett, appreciate you being here as well. Thank you. So, we'll move on to Section 9, which is an action agenda. This is a little bit different, since we have a combined meeting. Typically, we would have a week to think about these items before we actually voted on them. Tonight, we are asked to vote on the items that are going to be presented to us. We do have an option to table them to the following meeting, but there are impacts from that, so we would want to use that wisely. So, we will start with our first item, which, Mr. Penn, we have the Budget Amendment, number five.
Thank you again. So, in your budget, in your package, rather, is Budget Amendment number five, and as you've probably gotten used to as we go through this process, we, on a monthly basis, will come back with a Budget Amendment that documents all the changes that we're aware of that's taken place in the past month. So, we've got five different funds that are impacted this time around, 1, 2, 3, 7, and 8. So, within Fund One, which is the state public school fund, we've got an overall increase of $769,000, which primarily reflects allotments for summer reading camps of $404,000, and EC programs, including Developmental Day program, $335,000. Within local funds, we've got a net decrease of $375,000 related to the ongoing expense reduction that directly ties to the bullet I mentioned on the last memo, where we said we've gone through our central office budgets. Federal funds has a net increase of $249,000. That includes IDEA, Title I and IDEA of $186,000 and $64,000 respectively. During the month, you'll see that there's actually three pages of revisions to all the different federal programs that we have. So, what typically happens is, the federal government will give you a preliminary indication of what the budget would be. We set that budget, we submit it, it gets approved, we get our final allotment back months later from the federal government, and then, we clean up all the budget lines to reflect that. So, you'll see a lot of movement with no net impact across a number of different grants, and that's what's captured in those pages. Kids Plus, an increase of $67,000 and some change related to the North Carolina Childcare Stabilization Grant. That's something that they've received for the past several years. And then, special funds, it's a net decrease of about $1.3 million. That's obviously the adjustment that we're making for Medicaid that we've talked about previously, us just cleaning that up within the budget. But then, the good news within there is that there is a second grant from Eli Lilly for Weddington Hills for $42,000. That'll be used to purchase, I think it's 14, Promethean boards within that school. So, that is the second time that they've come back to us with a $42,000 grant, so total of $84,000, so we're appreciative to Eli Lilly for that. Questions on the amendments?
Board members, if we have any questions, make sure we understand what we're voting on. Okay, if we're comfortable with what we're voting on, we need a motion and a second that Budget Amendment number five be approved as presented.
I make a motion that we accept the amendment as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Treadaway. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Who was first? Catherine? All right. So, I do have a motion and a second, so we need to vote on this one, since it is on the action agenda for tonight. So, all in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, that motion passes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. So, our next item is 9.02, and this is the K-8 ELA curriculum, and we have Ms. Sarah Reeves and Ms. Tracy Hayes coming to the podium, and this is the curriculum that they've presented to us over the last couple of weeks. So, we've all had an opportunity to at least see it before, so welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kapicki. We really appreciate your time this evening, as we are prepared to present a K-8 ELA curriculum recommendation that has certainly been months in the making, but as we have shared previously, is absolutely imperative as we move forward for the critical success of our students and staff. As we move forward today, we really want to frame the why to the context, but also allow you the opportunity to hear from several of our remarkable instructional leaders across the county, serving in both leadership positions as well as in the classroom. And so, with that being said, as I begin my presentation today, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Orlando Robinson to begin our presentation. He is currently the principal at CC Griffin Middle School.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kapicki. My name is Orlando Robinson, the proud principal of CC Griffin Middle School. Thank you for allowing me and my colleagues the opportunity to speak in reference to the K-8 ELA curriculum adoption... My name is Orlando Robinson, the proud principal of CC Griffin Middle School. Thank you for allowing me and my colleagues the opportunity to speak in reference to the K-8 ELA curriculum adoption. I believe if my teachers at CC Griffin had access to an engaging, well-designed curriculum, it will enable them to be more of a champion for all students each and every day. When I think about student achievement, in my experience of ten years as a principal, with success in schools has been centered around student achievement and student engagement within the classroom. With this new curriculum, my teachers will be able to spend more time internalizing the curriculum to ensure they are presenting the content in a way that is more fully engaging to their students, and ensures that our students are being exposed to grade-level academic content every day. While planning and preparing for instruction with our teachers, our new curriculum will allow my ELA teachers at Griffin more time to focus on how the lesson unfolds, planning for misconceptions, planning for areas that may need to be scaffold, or planning for acceleration. Basically, we can spend more time customizing the lessons to meet our students' instructional needs. When they devote quality time to do these things, instead of wasting a lot of precious time and energy searching for resources, our students will benefit most. This is how the new curriculum will help us at CC Griffin Middle School and all Cabarrus County schools to be a champion for all students. I would like to introduce one of our champions for students at CC Griffin, Mr. James Fleming. He is an eighth-grade ELA teacher.
Good evening, Dr. Kupicki, elected school board members and officials, and our community members. It is truly an honor to stand before you and greet the community of Cabarrus County as a proud educator of Cabarrus County schools. As my wonderful principal, Mr. Robinson stated, I am James Morrell Fleming III, and I am one of the proud eighth-grade ELA teachers at Curl Caesar Griffin STEM Middle School. I am also a proud product of Cabarrus County schools, graduating from Concord High School, as well as the son, grandson, and nephew of strong Cabarrus County school educators. This curriculum is important. As we know, our students are the most important investment that we have. They are our future. In all levels of education, there is a blueprint and a template. More commonly, we as teachers always say, there is a wheel that is rolling, and we don't want to reinvent it. We would like to think that every school is perfect, and that the wheel is moving for each student. However, what happens when the wheel is broken? What happens when that wheel is cracked? Or sadly, what happens when the wheel is missing? How do we transport our students to success? These are some of the raised questions and scenarios that many of our teachers have. Many teachers are challenged trying to meet the demanding needs of our students while juggling numerous tasks. In some schools, our students have top-notch resources. However, in many schools, that is not always the case. I remember attending Cabarrus County schools and having some amazing teachers with resources. However, we know from 2009, the world has changed, and education has changed. The new ELA curriculum through arts and letters will allow our students to access a strong, viable curriculum. It will serve as a floor or base that our scholars know they will be educated with pride. For new teachers, I believe it will serve as a strong guide to helping feel an upper edge on teaching. For lateral and residency candidates, it will make things a little bit easier as they're struggling to try and become high-qualified teachers. For veteran teachers like myself, it serves as another tool in our toolkit to help our students and supplement our already strong teaching practices. Our obligation, as we know, is to our students, and as a teacher who teaches some of the brightest and most unique students in Cabarrus County, I believe this curriculum will help. I tell my students at the beginning of each year, and I remind them at the end, and I will leave you with the same quote by Dr. W. B. DuBois, "Education must not simply teach work, it must teach life." By adopting this curriculum, and as another tool for educating our students in Cabarrus County, you are investing in teaching life to our students that we love so much, and allowing them to enter our doors to learn, and when they depart to serve. Thank you.
Good evening, members of our Board of Education and Dr. Kupicki. My name is Tara Butch, and I have the privilege of serving as the proud principal at Rocky River Elementary School. I truly appreciate your time this evening to speak with you regarding the possible adoption of this K-8 reading curriculum. The instructional leadership team at Rocky River Elementary School has spent a lot of time reading, studying, and unpacking the Opportunity Makers, a research study where trajectory-changing schools focused in on three areas: belonging, consistency, and coherence, all leading to an extraordinary academic impact for students. Delivering consistently good teaching and grade-level content to all students, as well as building on a unified instructional program where priorities are clear and consistent, led to exceptional levels of learning for the students in this study. These schools were proven to continue their academic growth for over a decade. Providing our students with a strong, consistent literacy foundation is essential. Research shows that students thrive when they have a clear, structured approach to reading, one that builds upon itself with coherence and consistency. So many of our students face barriers to their learning, most being out of their control. So many of our teachers are seeking resources that they are trying to vet and ensure that they are high-quality to grow and move their students. This has been one of the biggest challenges for our teachers at Rocky River. We have used some of our allocated Title I funds to purchase materials to support their literacy instruction, such as book sets, classroom libraries, student workbooks, technology licenses, and more. By adopting a reading curriculum, we will be providing our teachers with consistent and quality resources to be used across Cabarrus County schools. We will be giving our students opportunities to empower them with the skills that they need to excel and grow academically, regardless of the school building that they attend. Again, I appreciate your time this evening, and I would now like to introduce you to Sarah Allen. And Sarah is the third, fourth, and fifth-grade reading multi-classroom leader at Rocky River Elementary School. Thank you again.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, Dr. Kupicki. As an instructional coach that is supported both in and out of Cabarrus County for districts with and without reading curriculum, I've seen firsthand the struggles that our wonderful Cabarrus County teachers face in providing effective, cohesive reading instruction. Asking teachers to be successful reading teachers with no curriculum is like asking a builder to build your dream home with no blueprint. Imagine, without a solid plan, you may struggle with the foundation, misplace crucial elements, and ultimately end up with a structure that lacks stability. A comprehensive reading curriculum provides the necessary blueprints guiding teachers in constructing a strong foundation for literacy that supports students' growth and development. You could be an absolute rock star teacher, I work along several of them, but if you're lacking the basic roadmaps and resources that you need, you and the students that you're serving are at a disadvantage. It's like asking a ship captain to successfully navigate a ship, but not give them a compass. Or trying to cook a complex recipe with no instructions. Trying to perform a symphony with no sheet music, you get the idea, right? I've watched as our hard-working teachers completed letters training and become experts at the science of reading, yet we're expected to teach from a bank of piecemeal lessons that don't support the research that we studied. They're spending hours upon hours a week trying to find relevant resources and are, quite frankly, getting burnt out. It's taking valuable time away from making lessons engaging and planning for individualized instruction to close the reading gaps. Our current approach lacks uniformity, leading to varied learning experiences across classrooms with the inconsistencies leaving huge gaps in the knowledge and the skills that our kids have. The need for this is clear. It's not merely an investment in materials, it's an investment in our students' future and the quality of the education that we're providing. Our children deserve it, our teachers deserve it. Please vote yes. I'd now like to introduce you to Ms. Sarah Anthony, third-grade teacher at Rocky River.
Good evening. I have been a teacher at Rocky River for the past five years, and I'm now in my nineteenth year as an educator. Previously, I taught in the public school systems in Northern Virginia and New York City, both of which had reading and math curriculums. I earned my master's degree in 2006 and achieved National Board certification in 2013. However, despite my experience and skillset, teaching third grade in my first year here in Cabarrus County was extremely difficult. Without having a cohesive curriculum, I felt lost. It felt like I had hardly any teaching experience whatsoever. My time was largely spent searching for resources in order to create engaging, standards-based lessons. I was exhausted, and still, I demonstrated a little bit of negative student growth. This felt very discouraging. Since then, year after year, my colleagues and I have been creating lesson after lesson, which often feels like sometimes we're building a house from scratch. While we've had success since then, we're constantly focused on building a foundation, which is leaving little room for the finishing touches. With a curriculum, it would be like having a well-built structure, allowing us to focus more on those details. In previewing the proposed curriculum, I think it is both straightforward and user-friendly, which would greatly help those new teachers get started, but also would allow experienced teachers like myself to revise and adapt the content for differentiation. To me, this is the best of both worlds because it's not just a scripted program. Additionally, I think it is crucial for us within our district to be able to look across schools and compare how we're doing. How are other schools performing? How are the third graders doing across the district as a whole? A solid curriculum would enable us to collaborate more effectively and share those teaching strategies. During my time spent at Rocky River, I've been hesitant to move grade levels because of the time and effort I've already spent in creating those lessons. But with a strong foundational curriculum, I feel like I could be more open to teaching other grades. Ultimately, our goal is to have more time for what truly matters, providing small group instruction and individualized feedback to close the learning gaps for our students to succeed. By voting yes, you are supporting teachers, which in turn lifts up every single student that we serve. Thank you for your time this evening.
I am lucky enough to serve as principal at Mount Pleasant Elementary, and my name is Alan Zamanowski. The Opportunity Makers research that... Now, I've gone way too far. Sorry. It's a good start. The Opportunity Makers research that Ms. Butch shared with you presents that we must be very intentional about making sure that all of our staff members know what to do for each and every student. If we aren't explicit about what we're doing, the why and the how of what we're doing, the results can vary and sometimes get away from us. The purchase of a district-wide literacy curriculum is the floor and the foundation on which we will build the work of our PLCs and teacher teams. Our staff will tell you that they spend far too much time, they already have told you, researching, vetting, and reviewing materials for their instruction with our current structures. Building on the foundation that is a consistent and coherent curriculum will allow us to spend this time focusing on differentiating for diverse learners, enriching where it's appropriate, intervening for students with individual needs, reviewing assessments and data that support learning, and truly focusing on the instructional how instead of the curricular what. As principals, we find ourselves in a world where we're hiring staff with diverse backgrounds: beginning teachers, residency-licensed teachers, and those from other states. We find that all of our teachers, no matter how experienced, spend a lot of time outside of their contract hours researching and vetting these materials. A standardized literacy curriculum is, again, the floor on which we can support our non-conventional education backgrounds and having the same entry point as our experienced staff, and support all our staff in preserving some balance in their personal and professional lives. Focusing on the how is a retention tool that will allow us to maximize the effectiveness of all of our professional learning communities and teacher time to better meet the needs of all students. With that, I'd love to introduce you to my own residency-licensed teacher, Marlia Martin, a second-year, fourth-grade reading teacher at Mount Pleasant Elementary.
Good evening, board. Thank you very much. As a beginning teacher, like she said, I'm in my second year of teaching in Cabarrus County on my residency license. I walked into this position with wonderful coaches and wonderful mentors. However, I spent a significant amount of time sourcing and vetting the right materials for our students. I know you've heard that over and over again, but it's the truth. Having access to a structured literacy curriculum would have allowed me to prioritize the true needs of a beginning teacher, which is classroom management, student relationships, and the specific needs of each learner. Having an established curriculum allows us, as new teachers, the opportunities to focus on establishing consistent routines in the classroom, planning engaging activities, working to build classroom management skills, and planning instructional remediation that meets the needs of all of our learners. And most importantly, it allows us to, time to build relationships with our students. So much time is spent on researching, planning, and vetting materials, which leads to working at home, planning outside of our PLC, and on our personal time. For a beginning teacher, the supporting instructional tools built into a curriculum would help guide my instruction and provide a level playing field that allows me to participate in the work of a PLC and other grade-level meetings. As my team and I have grown more confident in a curriculum and resource that we have structured together and built over time, we have seen improvements in student engagement and achievement. But providing a curriculum for, in which our district allows, excuse me, every teacher, experienced or otherwise, and every student access to consistent and coherent curriculum and academic achievement. Thank you.
Good evening, board and Dr. Kupicki. I am Julie Barbie. I'm the proud principal at Bethel Elementary School. I would also like to say I'm a proud product of Cabarrus County schools. I returned to Cabarrus County to be a teacher, and then also to be an administrator. Like many among me, I have remained loyal to this fine district because of what we stand on and what we promise our families. We're going to first ensure that students are safe and feel a sense of belonging. And second, we will provide all students with a world-class education that is viable, comprehensive, and guaranteed. The curriculum you are going to vote on for this evening, we will, that will allow us all to be able to more effectively and comprehensively deliver on this promise. What you're seeing on the screen is the Scarborough's Reading Rope. This graphic makes the science of reading visual. Scarborough's Reading Rope is a simple way to understand what research has shown us about how children learn to read. The two main parts of the rope are word recognition and language comprehension. Each of the strands in those two parts represents an important skill that works together to create a strong, skilled reader. At this time, our elementary schools have a science-of-reading-aligned curriculum that provides kindergarten through third grade that viable, comprehensive, and guaranteed instruction in the top part of the rope, in the word recognition. Only part of what, again, science states, we need in order to become a strong, skilled reader. The curriculum you are voting for this evening will enable us to provide guaranteed, research-based practice and instruction in kindergarten through eighth grade in the second part of that rope, the language comprehension. Again, what science states, we must also have in order to become skilled readers. At Bethel Elementary, we are committed to ensuring that every child becomes a strong, skilled reader. That's why embracing the science of reading is critical. It's not just a theory. It's evidence-based, it's an evidence-based approach that helps us to understand how the brain learns to read. By implementing this new curriculum, which is grounded in this research, we will be ensuring that our students become strong, capable readers. To support our educators, the district has invested in letters, or language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling, and literacy for leaders training, both comprehensive professional development programs that equip teachers and school leaders with the knowledge and strategies needed to apply the science of reading research effectively. This training empowers our educators, strengthens instruction, and ultimately transforms student outcomes, but only if we are also using a curriculum that, again, is grounded in this research. At Bethel, literacy is our foundation for success, and by aligning our curriculum with this science of reading, we are giving every student the opportunity to thrive, and every teacher the opportunity to create thriving readers. At this time, I would like to introduce Brandy Rollins, an educator and teacher leader at Bethel, who works hand-in-hand with our teachers every day to strengthen our current resources and ensure that our instruction is grounded in research-based best practices.
Hi, guys. I am here representing our third-grade, fourth-grade, and fifth-grade team. My job right now is heavily anchored in planning and implementing strong, effective instruction in both reading and math, and coaching a variety of teachers. I'd like to take a look at Scarborough's Reading Rope a little bit differently through the anecdotal lens of specific... the anecdotal lens of specifically how it impacts teachers as they plan for a day's literacy instruction. So one of the unfortunate realities that we find ourselves right now in this season is that our teachers have a deep knowledge of how to implement this work, but they don't have the resources to do that. So all of our current resources have to be studied, they have to be looked over carefully, and then we find ourselves either revising, supplementing, or replacing so that we can be faithful to our goal to implement the science of reading intentionally and systematically. As you can imagine, that is very time-consuming. But teachers are willing to pay the time cost if they get the benefit of readers who can read. Recently, I was working with our fifth-grade team, which is an incredibly hard-working team, an incredibly capable team, and they have a shared efficacy that's really beautiful to be a part of. It's comprised of two beginning teachers, two veteran teachers who are not new to teaching but are new to fifth grade, and then one participate teacher who has joined us from Jamaica. So we worked diligently to unpack the standard, first of all figuring out what it is that teachers should be doing, how to facilitate learning so that students can do exactly what they're supposed to do. One of the tools from the training that Julie mentioned, letters, that we have found incredibly helpful is the comprehension checklist, and it ensures that we don't miss anything in the second part of that rope. So we use that checklist to guide our work. We practiced in model teaching, we practiced model teaching for each other, so sitting in the PLC, taking turns being teacher, taking turns being student, ensuring that we had appropriate use of academic vocabulary and effective delivery. We annotated our texts, we wrote in the books and on our lesson plans, and really did the work ahead of time to internalize the work that we did before we presented it to students. So then we went to our county document to link the ebook that the students were supposed to use, and the link did not work. So one of the most pervasive issues in building a learning plan using free and open-source materials is that there's no guarantee that these things will be available year to year. And unfortunately, that day, we were out of luck. And I just really believe that our teachers and our students need more than luck to drive their day-to-day instruction. So all of our work in this particular planning time was to address the demands of a reading informational text standard 5.1, which requires students to quote directly and accurately from a text to support an inference. Without the text in front of them, students cannot meet the demand of this work. The lesson, while planned beautifully, could not be delivered. What we accept as a high time cost became a high time waste, and that's a lot harder for teachers to accept. Our diligent work did not yield fruit, it yielded frustration. We did not believe that after all that work we did to know exactly what students really should be able to do and how they should get there, that it would be ethical to ask them to engage in that standard without appropriate access to the necessary resources. In much the same way, we don't believe that it's ethical to ask teachers to teach without providing them the viable, research-based, science-of-reading-aligned resources that they need. Without equitable access to high-quality curriculum, we are gambling with children's long-term education outcomes, specifically whether or not they will grow up to be literate adults. And because teachers are forced to piecemeal this instruction, we're doing our best and not always happy with the outcomes. So along with teachers across the district and the teachers in the third through fifth grade teams, specifically at Bethel, we are here to strongly support the literacy curriculum adoption because we want ethical and equitable outcomes, first for our students, but also for our teachers. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for your time this evening. The Opportunity Myth is a body of research that explores how current U.S. schools are failing to prepare students for college and careers despite their hard work and high aspirations. While most students attend school, they do the work and meet assignment expectations, they still do struggle to master grade-level skills. This is due to schools providing insufficient access to key resources that allow them to master the actual rigor of the grade-level standards at hand. The report emphasizes that students need more direct access to grade-level appropriate resources to truly be success, excuse me, successful, which this standardized reading curriculum will provide. As indicated on this slide, it stresses the very alarming statistic that in one single school year, the average student spends 581 of 720 hours available on assignments that are not high-quality or relevant to the grade-level standards at hand. All in all, the Opportunity Myth highlights the need for rigorous, equitable instruction that is on grade level despite students' present learning levels or barriers to ensure that all students can reach their fullest potential. I have my remarkable multi-classroom leader here, Ms. Amy Witten, who supports our teachers in these very efforts.
Good evening, members of the board. Good evening, Dr. Kupicki. As Ms. Patel mentioned, I'm a multi-classroom leader, and I work with a third-grade team of ten teachers to help them plan and implement literacy instruction that is highly engaging and highly effective. This is my fifteenth year in education, four different schools, an elementary school here at Cabarrus County, and in three of those schools, I've had the opportunity to do the same role that I'm doing right now, which is leading teachers in planning literacy instruction. I will say that one, well, first of all, our teachers are working hard. They're working hard to make sure that these kids and our students get high-quality instruction, and they will get the job done. But one barrier that I have definitely seen is the inconsistency of access to resources for both teachers and students across the district. We have literacy libraries in our elementary schools. These are places where we house books, chapter books, picture books, decodables, materials and resources that schools purchase for their teachers and their students to access. That varies very differently from school to school. I've worked in several schools where we have a lot of resources in our literacy libraries, and then I've worked in schools where we haven't had so much. This leads to inconsistent learning among our students from school to school. With this curriculum, all students across the district will have access to mentor texts in their hands, and all students across the district in every classroom will have the access to the same texts. Teachers can dedicate more time to what truly matters, which is high-effective instruction and student learning. Another barrier I've identified as an instructional coach is time within, and several of my colleagues have spoken to this tonight, time within our planning that is dedicated to researching and finding the resources to teach our standards. Not only do they find and vet and research these resources, but then they plan activities and find videos and vocabulary words that will help build background knowledge, they're creating questions that are text-dependent, that will give students opportunities to demonstrate their comprehension of a text. Again, this is very meaningful work, but it is a lot of work spent on just the planning piece when there's no planning and no time spent on the student learning, student achievement. How do we deliver this instruction? With this, a strong standards-aligned curriculum would give our students the tools and the time, the teachers the time and the students the tools to need to focus on what matters most, effective instruction and student growth. Teachers can spend more time analyzing student learning and responding to it in a timely manner. They can plan the necessary scaffolds, as well as any enrichment opportunities that their students need based on the data that they're analyzing. Investing in the right curriculum means ensuring all students receive rigorous, equitable learning experiences that build strong readers and thinkers. To speak more on that, I would like to invite one of our fantastic second-grade teachers, Nicole Miller.
Good evening. Thank you so much for your time. My name's Nicole Miller. I'm a second-grade teacher at Hickory Ridge Elementary School. As you can see on the next slide, ninety-six percent of teachers are using Google to find lesson plans. Seventy-five percent of teachers are using Pinterest to find lesson plans. In addition, I can attest that one hundred percent of teachers I personally know and work with are using Teachers Pay Teachers to find lesson plans. We do this because we don't always have what we need. As a direct result of the lack of a published curriculum within our district, teachers are spending extra time and their own money buying non-vetted lesson plans, which leads to inconsistent quality, lack of alignment, ineffective pedagogy, lack of differentiation, gaps in learning, inequity within classrooms, teacher burnout, and many other negative qualities. However, by ensuring tonight that teachers have access to a comprehensive, standards-aligned, engaging, customizable curriculum that meets the diverse needs of our students, teachers will be able to foster an equitable environment across the district where every child can succeed regardless of their background. Thank you so much for your time in considering what is best for our students and also our teachers of Cabarrus County.
Good evening. My name is Megan Frazier, and I've been an educator for over twenty years. Currently, I'm one of the assistant principals at Hickory Ridge Middle School, but the majority of my career has been spent as a high school English teacher here in Cabarrus County schools. Between my time as an assistant principal, I had the opportunity to return to the classroom, an experience I highly recommend for all administrators as it offered invaluable perspective. A key philosophy in my leadership is removing barriers for our teachers so they can focus on teaching our students. One of the biggest barriers to teaching is the time it takes to plan aligned and intentional lessons. Our teachers are often pulled in many directions, and planning time is frequently used for anything but lesson preparation. During PLC meetings, teachers are often more concerned about gathering materials than focusing on student-centered strategies. The data on this slide shows that our teachers are prioritizing access to high-quality instructional materials over higher salaries. With the adoption of this new ELA curriculum, teachers will be able to focus on how to deliver effective instruction rather than spending their time gathering resources. This curriculum also addresses the forty-six percent of teachers who have expressed a need for intervention programs to support the diverse needs of our students. The new curriculum will help our educators better support our ML students, students with IEPs, and those receiving tiered interventions. Nearly forty years ago, I was a seventh grader who had already attended six schools within two years. I often felt like I had missed something that my classmates already seemed to know. While my experience took me across four states, many of our students face similar transitions within our own district. This new ELA curriculum may not solve every challenge posed by frequent moves, but it will ensure all students have access to a guaranteed and viable curriculum across our schools. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Jennifer Bradley, an amazing sixth-grade ELA teacher at Hickory Ridge Middle School, to share her insight.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Bradley. I'm a sixth-grade Alps and ELA teacher at Hickory Ridge. Over the last fifteen years, I've taught at Wolfmeadow, Bethel, and CC Griffin, so I've been in the county for a while. I am a product of Cabarrus County Schools. My children are products of Cabarrus County Schools, and I believe in Cabarrus County Schools. I come from a family of educators, and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of them, my students, and my colleagues to advocate for something fundamental, high-quality curriculum resources. Like Dr. Frazier said, the burden of purchasing our own resources weighs heavily on our teachers, especially new teachers, who enter the classroom with little to no resource support. Without resources, new teachers struggle to keep their heads above water, and even veteran teachers like me spend countless hours outside of school piecing together lessons for our students, pulling texts from one place, questions from another, videos from a third, and then trying to meet the needs of all the varying levels and abilities that we have in our classroom, and we have to use what's available to us right now. A cohesive curriculum would not just lighten this load, it would strengthen instruction across the county. It would ensure that our students are ready for the next grade, and it would create equity amongst our schools. Having a high-quality curriculum would give us our time back. It's less time searching for resources, less time making copies, and we can focus on the craft of teaching again. If we want to recruit and retain new teachers, if we want to turn our students into forward thinkers, we need to spend the money and give them the tools that they need to succeed. Our students deserve a consistent, quality education, and our teachers deserve the tools to provide it to them. Thank you.
With this slide, I just want to add an additional piece of research. So this slide pertains to a study conducted by the Center for American Progress. It is an independent, nonpartisan policy institute that is dedicated to improving the lives of all Americans through bold, progressive ideas, as well as strong leadership and concerted action. This speaks clearly to the return on investment. So this particular study found that the average cost-effectiveness ratio of switching curriculum was almost forty times that of classroom size reduction. So the curriculum, meaning a well-designed, engaging curriculum, had more of an impact than focusing on class size reduction. This report also spoke to when districts put in place smart processes to select high-quality curriculum, students achieve more. So now Ms. Tracy Hayes will speak about the selection process we used.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Thank you, board members, Dr. Kupicki. Tracy Hayes, I have the honor of serving in our curriculum instruction department here in Cabarrus County. And I'd like to first thank all of our amazing educators this evening for coming out. It's been an honor to serve in this community, and I have been here since June of 2023. And essentially, tonight, what you have heard are the sentiments that Mrs. Reeves and I have heard since I've been here and since she has been here. And so we felt that that was important for you all to hear from our most valuable employees, our teachers that are serving our students. And so what we're going to do at this point is just share with you all in our public viewing audience of how we got to this point after listening to our educators. So I'm going to describe for you how we got to the point of looking at curriculum, because once our teachers were telling us this is what they needed, we knew we needed to take some action. And so what we started with was first working with North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. So we reached out to the Office of Early Learning that supports literacy in our elementary grades and asked for what are, what are the other public school units across the county or the state of North Carolina? What are they using? And so we took the list that they provided us and looked through which of these were comprehensive, meaning reading, writing, speaking, and listening, because we knew, as Ms. Barbie shared earlier with the Scarborough's Reading Rope, we need to have all things to build complex, skillful readers. And so that was very important in our process. So what we did was take the comprehensive programs that were used across the state, and we vetted those against ED reports that helped us to determine what parts of these curriculums are really valuable. And so we took that information and really narrowed down to eight comprehensive curriculum for elementary school and middle school. We know, as it was talked about earlier this evening with the Opportunity Makers, the importance of cohesion and coherence. And so we knew with our students matriculating up to middle school, we wanted a similar experience. So one of our components was to look for a K-8 ELA curriculum. So what we did from there was start meeting with these eight different vendors to learn more about their program and what they would offer our teachers and our students. And so additionally, we know we needed to hear more from a larger stakeholder group. So in September of 2024, we launched a needs assessment survey with our educators to determine what is it that you value in our current curricular resources, and what is it that you feel that you need that you don't have? And from there, that helped us to determine, we heard things like, we want students to have an actual book in hand so that they can quickly cite textual evidence, for example. And so our current curriculum does not offer that, and we know that we needed to be able to provide that. So we took those curriculums and narrowed down to three that we felt met the needs of what our staff was asking for based off of that needs assessment. And so from the three, we brought forth to our educators Wit and Wisdom, Arts and Letters, and then American Reading Company. And we created two opportunities for feedback for all of our stakeholders. The first being December 4th, we held an in-person preview fair where we invited a member from every grade level, K-8, to attend so that they could hear firsthand from the vendors of what they would want to see and have in this curriculum. And so we created a rubric that you'll see here on the screen that looked for, does it align with standards? Is it evidence-based? Does it have assessment and progress monitoring? Is it engaging and motivating for kids? Because we know that we want our kids to really be engaged with what they're doing. Because we know that we want our kids to really be engaged with what they're doing. Does it allow differentiation and flexibility? Is it accessible and usable? And then did it also provide professional development support? So we had the in-person program preview fair on December 4th, and then on December 6th through December 20th, we launched a virtual preview fair open up to all of our educators where we had almost 97% participation. We also opened it up to families so that they could weigh in on the options as well. On the next couple of screens, you're going to see the results of the in-person program preview fair as well as the virtual. So the graph on the left shows you the results according to the rubrics used of the in-person preview fair. And you can see here, Arts and Letters was rated higher than American Reading Company and Wit and Wisdom. The virtual preview fair, which was opened up to more of our educators, almost all, at 97%, you can see American Reading Company had an average rating slightly above Arts and Letters and definitely above Wit and Wisdom. This shows the results of our virtual fair for families, and you can see families also appreciated American Reading Company and Arts and Letters. So both the in-person, virtual, and for families, you can see that we really had two front-runners with American Reading Company and Arts and Letters. We also did a force ranking with our staff at the in-person program preview fair and the virtual program preview fair. So we asked them to tell us which one was your first preference, second preference, and third preference. And from there, 89% at the in-person program preview fair selected Arts and Letters as their first or second choice. The virtual program preview fair, 80% of teachers selected Arts and Letters as their first or second choice. There's a breakdown between elementary and middle at the in-person program preview fair. You can see roughly at the in-person, it was 89% for both elementary and middle. At the virtual program preview fair, we had 78, almost 79% elementary school teachers select Arts and Letters as either their first or second, and 90% of middle school teachers. So what we knew was we had two strong contenders here, and we really had great response from our staff at acknowledging according to our rubric and then also their force ranking of what they wanted to see in a curriculum. We also knew we had budget implications, and so we needed to be fiscally responsible when it came to a decision. So Ms. Reeves is going to speak to you about how we moved along in this process through our budget.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Hayes. So when we got down to this point, we had solicited the feedback from all of our stakeholders, and we were able to go back to our two vendors of American Reading Company and Arts and Letters and basically say, here is our existing budget. We also knew it was very important to make sure that we could fiscally sustain whatever resource that was purchased. So when we did our comprehensive needs assessment, but also in speaking with educators, the things that we heard loud and clear were, one, we want to make sure kids have text in hand. We don't want to have renewable online resources that we're relying on a device or broken links year after year. We want actual books for students, and our teachers want books. Additionally, if the product came with workbooks, we don't want to have to spend time printing or making copies of those resources because that is valuable time that, as you heard today, our teachers could be spending doing other things. So if there is a workbook included in the curriculum, we want to make sure that that's not only built into the quote, but there's some sustainability there. So we don't want you to roll out this resource and then roll back this resource a year later and not be able to give us the high-quality resources that we want. And so with that being said, we were able to go back to our two vendors and said, here is our budget. What can we make happen to make sure that there's cohesion and consistency to ensure that we could provide high-quality curriculum kindergarten through eighth grade for our families? And so with that being said, we were able to get two additional quotes back from both of the companies, giving us exactly what we were working with in terms of numbers with a 5% population increase as well as renewable costs for the next five years. So we were looking to the year 2030 to be able to make sure that we could sustain the cost. Additionally, in light of the fiscal situation, we also wanted to make sure that we did not have to come back next year and say, we need additional funds to complete the K-8 purchase. What we want to do is make sure that this is a one-shot ask in terms of local funding and that everything else moving forward, we could sustain out of state funding. And that is exactly what we did. And so as you can see here, we have the cost proposals broken down. Additionally, we also have that outline of what was provisioned with American Reading Company and Arts and Letters. As you can see with American Reading Company, a lot of the resources ended up being converted from what we saw in the program preview fair, which was printed materials, to based on our budget, it needing to be online, which we heard loud and clear from our teachers was not what they wanted. And so as a result of that, when we were speaking with Arts and Letters, we wanted to talk about the key highlights of what was fiscally sustainable. So after this one-time purchase, how could we make sure that we have a guarantee for the next five years leading to 2030 that we could sustain a fiscal cost to give teachers everything that they need in terms of using state funding? So after this point in time, not having to rely on any local funding. And so as you can see here, here are just some of the key highlights. So every student receiving a student workbook, they would receive the student workbook four times a year to match each module. All teachers would also receive the printed manuals versus having to rely on online. Additionally, what was included for five years was the online software for all students and teachers, absolutely no cost to the district. And as you can see here, some other key outlines, the Knowledge Deck Module cards, fluency reference cards, classroom posters, all of the products that were shared during the program preview fair that teachers were exposed to. I know I personally sat in several rooms where our teachers were asking, will we get those? Will we get those? Because obviously, that is what teachers want to know. Are we getting all of the resources that are being provisioned to us? And so as a key highlight that I want to point out, in November, this board so graciously voted to approve a $2.8 million ask in terms of fund balance appropriation. We also want to be very candid in understanding that we are in a very difficult fiscal situation in which we want to be cost-effective. And so we were able to work with the vendor to actually get us almost $460,000 below budget. So we were able to come in under budget, provision all of the resources for our teachers, and then not have to return to the board with any additional asks that relates to K-8 ELA curriculum after tonight. We felt like that was really important, and this vendor was able to work with us to be able to do so. In terms of what we are getting, it isn't just about a curriculum, it's about books in hands of children, and that is the bulk of the funding. So as you can see here, over 75% of this budget that we are coming to you tonight, which is a $2.2 million, $340,000 ask, 75% of that is in student books and workbooks. So I can't think of anything more valuable than putting books in the hands of children to help teach them strong literacy practices. And as you heard tonight, it is very difficult to meet the commands of the North Carolina Standard Course of Study when students can't cite textual evidence in their own texts. And right now, what is being asked is a teacher has one text, and we're asking them to do something that they can't do with the resources that they are provisioned. Additionally, something that we have heard loud and clear is that we need additional foundational resources to teach our earliest readers. And so this curriculum would not replace our phonics or phonemic awareness curriculum. Those two things exist, and they will continue to exist. However, we still need additional access to what we call our early readers or decodables. This product will enable us to purchase additional geodes, is what they are called, and 12% of that budget will go to those primer readers to be able to support as an on-ramp for our youngest readers, the ability to build knowledge while also accessing texts that they can read based on the phonemic awareness and phonics components of the early literacy curriculum that they are using. Our teacher materials will encompass 10% of that. That is a one-time cost. It's really the teacher manuals and the things that would be presented in the classroom to support with this curriculum. And then last but not least, the professional development is 3%. It will be built into our state budget moving forward to provision onboarding support and professional development as we continue with the curriculum adoption, and it will additionally cover any new staff members that we are hired. So again, we want to be very intentional that we are so grateful for the generous gift that you all were able to vote on in November, but we also want to be mindful of the fiscal situation. And so as a result, we were able to come in almost $460,000 under budget and not have to return to you again with another ask of K-8 ELA curriculum moving forward. And so last but not least, just a few highlights of some of the resources and materials, but we talked a lot about this text in hand. I think one of the things that we heard loud and clear from our staff members, what they were most excited about is, these are texts that students can pick up in the media center. They can see at Barnes and Noble, they can order off of Amazon. So the ability to build knowledge through high-quality texts that they will see in a multitude of settings is really powerful and impactful. It also allows us the flexibility to be able to do purchasing outside of using this vendor moving forward. Additionally, it gives us the flexibility to replace texts when needed. And so all of those were key highlights that additionally reinforced our recommendation. So with that being said...
Thank you for the presentation. Before we do that, though, we do have a valuable member on our board. He's our Teacher of the Year, and he's also Teacher Liaison. I know you reviewed this presentation. What are you hearing from other teachers? What concerns? Has anybody raised any concerns on this? And what questions would you have?
I don't have any questions. I thought it was a really good presentation. You know, my perspective as a high school teacher is a little unique and different than a lot of the elementary experience, but I can definitely tell you that in 14 years, I've taught eight different classes, a handful of those I've made from scratch, and the amount of time that it takes to do that is significant. I want to say about two years ago, I spent about 60 hours of time over the summer to design a class that I thought would be meaningful and engaging for economics and personal finance. And that class is 135 hours, and I spent 60 hours of my own time making sure that when I show up, I can do my job, because teaching happens to be a very unique profession where if you don't put in the work, how do you actually do your job? And so the amount of time that I imagine it must take an elementary school teacher who has ELA and science and math to vet the resources that will be required is astronomical, and they're doing that for more than one subject. So while I have not discussed this with a single elementary school teacher, I think that I can only imagine the amount of time that this would free up to do exactly what they said, making meaningful connections with students, classroom management. I don't know that in my entire career, I've ever planned a lesson during my planning period. I don't think I've done it a single time, because if you wait until that time, you've waited too long. So, I mean, you don't have to take my word for it. You just heard from 20 people who are the experts and most trusted people in their building. I think that they know what they're talking about.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, you're fine.
That was good input for us to know. So do any of our board members on the curriculum, could you want to add anything before we have a discussion?
I will just say, I just gave back my bag for the third grade first module. And so the way this is structured is that there are themes for, I think, four themes per year, and within that, you know, you get a workbook. For the one that I saw, the four texts, but then there's what's great about the teacher... So there's a teacher manual, that's the standard teacher manual, along with the workbook that the kids get to take home and work with and touch these books and read these books and all of that. But there's also a thing called a prologue, which is for multilingual learners. So it gives you tools to adjust to other kids in the classroom. So one of the biggest things that I'm concerned... I love to read. I've always loved to read, and I've instilled that in my children. And I'm lucky that it wasn't a huge struggle to get them to read, but I remember kindergarten, and that was not fun at home. But what I'm concerned about are kids where it is hard. It is hard to read, learning those basics. And so what is awesome about the text is that they're engaging, it's fun. I really do think even if you weren't into... The module that I saw was about the sea. So we talked about discovery and exploring and technology, but also like weird creatures that live under the sea. It was just, it's really dynamic and engaging, but I also could see the value for all of our students. I just, our teachers are required to teach a classroom full of students at different levels. You've got kids that are beyond the grade level, and then you've got kids that walked in the door and they didn't know anything, they didn't have preschool, they didn't have... You know, there's so much that they need in support. So if we can lift that burden with like fun materials and interesting materials, engaging materials, and then focus on that instruction, I just think it's a huge gift that we can give. And I'm just super, like, we sit up here and we talk about scores and test scores, and we're a very successful district. So it's really impressive to hear the amount of work that our teachers have done to be at the level that we're at. I cannot wait for next year if we do this, because I just, you're going to be even more amazing, and that's hard to believe that that's even possible. But giving them what they need, I think, is so important. So I just, I really appreciate the opportunity, being able to review all that. I also like that we have parents, but making sure that we have buy-in from the people who are going to need this is so important.
Thank you, Ms. Siskel-Bard. You want to add anything?
Is this a time for questions?
Well, two parts to this is, we want to make sure we understand what we're voting on, because we're voting on it tonight. And then the second part is, we'll need to, I would assume we're going to get a motion to the second, then there's a discussion before we actually vote.
Okay. Then a couple of questions, just for clarification. This is a reading curriculum, correct?
It's comprehensive in that it teaches reading, writing, and also addresses speaking and listening standards. Phonics and phonological awareness programs such as Haggerty and Letterland that we currently use will still be used in addition to this.
There is not a grammar part of this.
It does encompass grammar and language within the connected text in reading, in authentic reading and writing formats, but it will also be explicit grammar and language within the module.
Will they have workbooks to practice the grammar part of things, or is there only one workbook?
It is a workbook that accompanies the module lessons within. So when grammar and language lessons appear, that is where it will show up in the student workbook as well. So that's where the practice will occur, and then applying it in their writing pieces that they usually have at a culminating part of the module.
Okay. So I, with Pam, and I looked at these, and I can tell you, as having taught myself, that yes, I cannot imagine a teacher spending all her time looking up on Google or whatever while we have not had resources or something in hand for teachers. That, to me, is like asking you to do office work and not supplying a typewriter or a computer. I just can't imagine that. And I know we have gone a long time under this. I am concerned too about the inconsistency over the schools. I think that this addresses that. And I would agree too that a comprehensive curriculum is 40 times more effective than class size, because you're not having to think about all that. So how much of this literacy will, all the things they read, will they be in book form or will there be digital to that?
That's an excellent question. So the way that we worked out the contract is any text that is provided will either be in their workbook, or they will have access either in peer reading or individual text, or the teacher will have a text in hand. So we made sure that what was included, every teacher would have access to the print text, and we would not have to rely so much on the digital devices to be able to explicitly teach these lessons.
So when we're looking at, so going forward, how many of the resources with the books? And I'm assuming these children will not be taking these books, reading books home? They will be used in the classroom? Is that correct?
So what more than likely we will see happen is that the workbooks will go home, which do include some text sets. You probably saw some of that. Additionally, what we would see is the geodes, the decodables, go home with students. More than likely, the read-aloud set would not necessarily go home with students. Additionally, the Arts and Letters has also provisioned some texts that we can provide from the media center or from classroom libraries that could support with knowledge building at home once we had a child that was able to read on their own. And that's really the bridge that we see from second grade, is from someone reading to me to me now actually taking... to me, to me now actually taking a book home from the media center or a classroom library to build that knowledge at home.
And you may or may not know the answer to this. Do we still have a writing assessment?
No, we no longer have a state writing assessment. However, in this curriculum, there are written components in the end of module course, which will bring back writing. And so we will actually be assessing students through a multifaceted lens, because we know the research supports that when we have strong writers, we have strong readers. And so that is a fundamental piece of this curriculum.
Can you address why we do not have the writing assessment as part of their testing anymore? Why was that gotten rid of?
So I could tell you that was from the state of North Carolina, and it actually was phased out due to fiscal reasons originally. It is very expensive to hire, I mean, because a Scantron cannot evaluate a writing assessment. And so that was really the way we phased out the fourth grade writing component.
I think I asked you, I just for, for, we get access to a lot of books. We obviously are not going to get all of those books, correct? We would, or do we get all the books?
Everything that is included in the curriculum, they have been able to build out for us that we will be able to purchase. And we will purchase the exact number that is needed for that classroom. So there will be instances where students will share, but that is designed in the curriculum, not because we're trying to shortcut for cost savings. So anything that is included in the curriculum will be there. There is a supplemental list, however, that we can work with our media services team to be able to bring into classroom libraries or into our school libraries. But more than likely, for example, three of the texts we just saw today, they already exist. So a lot of these concepts of knowledge building, these are very popular texts that already exist in our media centers and classroom libraries.
And we were not, just so y'all all understand, we were not able to peruse every book that would be on this thing. So you, you addressed that in saying that if we found something that was not appropriate, for whatever reason, it can be sent back and can be exchanged.
That is correct. And that was very intentional. We wanted to work with a vendor. We understand that things change. And so we didn't want to commit to a curriculum that we couldn't substitute texts in and out. And there were several curriculums out of the eight that we actually eliminated for that very reason, because those vendors said, you just have to, you know, do away with that volume or module. So we have the ability to do that. We also have the ability to purchase through a variety of vendors. We don't necessarily have to use Great Minds to purchase these resources moving forward. It's whomever is, is the cheapest available vendor for our students.
Oh, I hope this is my last question. How many of our resources that you're buying will be, obviously, the, the workbooks are not reusable. Are we saying everything else is reusable, so it should be a one-time buy?
Yes, ma'am. And so we will be very intentional about using an inventory system to make sure that we are inventorying those materials. So for example, if I have one less kindergarten class at this school, I can transition those materials to another school in a future year. So the ultimate goal being that we do not have to fiscally invest again in a KELA curriculum in the near future, because we have built in some proper processes. The workbook, however, will, it's a consumable. We want kids to write in it, we want them to take it home. That will be purchased year over year. And you will see in the attached quote that that workbook expenses about $303,000 per year. So after this year, we are actually building that into our state budget, so that we will not have to use local monies to purchase that renewable resource. Everything else will be renewed year to year without an additional cost.
So we, we, we heard that this was in use in some other districts. How long has it been in use in other districts?
So arts and letters is actually a newer curricular program that was based off the model of wit and wisdom. Wit and wisdom is actually used in 17 counties currently in the state of North Carolina. What we learned in our process and meeting with the vendors, they're both part of Great Minds, that Great Minds actually adapted all things they heard from feedback with wit and wisdom. That is an evidence-based program. It gets good results. Districts are very happy with it. But there were some tweaks that they got feedback on that needed to be made. For example, wit and wisdom requires 90 minutes of daily instruction in literacy. Arts and letters require 60 minutes, which will afford us to continue morphology, Haggerty, Letterland, other things that we know we need to add and supplement with our whole literacy approach. So some of the usability, making it more teacher-friendly, was some of the feedback that the Great Minds used to develop arts and letters. So arts and letters is a newer program, but it is based off the philosophy of wit and wisdom.
So are there, excuse me, is there data that shows their scores have increased in those districts, in those 17 districts can't do? Because you keep using the term evidence-based, have we seen significant rise? And obviously, if they've had no curriculum and you give them a curriculum, we're going to have some improvement. But has there been significant improvement in those schools? And I'm especially concerned with the K through three, because that's where our foundation starts. So can, do you have data for that?
We do. And actually, there is a white paper that I can share with you as well, that has the preliminary data. I would say the important thing to look at is not just North Carolina, but across the country and where they have used the curriculum. I think we do have to take into effect that the pandemic obviously swayed some of the data. However, I'll be happy to share with you that additional data set.
Okay.
Okay, there's a question, so we understand what we're voting for. We have a discussion after, we have a motion, so you have a question that's related to what we're, understanding what we're voting on.
Thank you. So I did have a couple of questions. So can you describe what the assessments look like? Because it's awesome, workbooks, things in hand, that kind of thing. But at the end of the day, our kids spend a lot of time on the computer, and are they going to have tests on the computer? Are they going to review materials on the computer? And like, what's the balance? What does the assessment look like? And then the other question I have is, if we were to do this tonight, what would the implementation look like? What does the timeline look like? And I appreciate everyone that's in the room here, but change is change, and there's going to be people that are nervous about change. And so I just want to make sure that we can support the people who have to use it.
All right, so I'll take the assessments. And that can be a hot topic, we know. We do not want to overly assess students, but we do know the importance of knowing what our students need in order to adjust instruction. So within the arts and letters, there are multiple ways to assess students. There are daily checks for understanding, so that teachers can immediately address a gap that a student may not know from that day's lesson. There are also what we call end-of-module assessments that are more comprehensive at assessing the reading and writing across even a rubric, having performance tasks. So there are listening comprehension that are done in K-2. And then midway through second grade, we actually switch to reading comprehension, which is more developmentally appropriate, and assessing a student's ability to read based off of some of the knowledge building that they've occurred through that particular unit or module of study. So there are different formats, formative as well as summative, and performance tasks built within each module. In terms of timeline, we actually spent a lot of today, actually, project managing out the timeline, because as you can imagine, a K-8 curriculum and what that entails, there is a lot of details behind it. So in terms of urgency, it really is critical that we know sooner rather than later. We just met with our principals last week, and they have questions around building out their master schedule. What does that look like? What are the implementations of a master schedule? What are the things that we need to be considering? In terms of professional development, when can we get teachers in to have them trained? Ideally, we would love to be able to offer some of our teachers that ability to get trained before they go out for summer break. If we can do that, we want to do that. But obviously, we have to secure the trainers to do that, and the sooner we know, the better. We've also talked a lot about the importance of getting the materials in the hands of our teachers prior to August. That is really important, because we, being one of the last districts in North Carolina to adopt a curriculum, we have the blessing of learning from our colleagues and what they wish that they would have done differently. And what we heard loud and clear is that you need to have the materials available so that teachers can digest them, they can internalize them prior to teaching. It is really difficult to hand teachers materials in August, which I'm sure they can speak to, and not have that ability to digest. Additionally, there's going to be smaller things that we have to work through. How does Haggerty and Letterland fit in with this? How does our science pacing and social studies pacing fit in with these knowledge building units? So there's a lot that we have to work out internally within our instructional framework from a curriculum standpoint. There's a lot from a pacing standpoint. And then there's a lot from a logistical, just making sure the materials are delivered, that we have what we need for kids when we welcome them back to school in August. And so as a result of that, there, you know, we are already trying to preliminary, get some things ready, but our plan is, you know, with this vote, that we will hit the ground running, starting at 7:00 AM tomorrow, to be able to get it ready. Because ultimately, you know, the end of, the end of the third quarter is this week. And so when we frame it that way, it's like, we don't have a lot of time before the end of the year. So that's a little bit about our timeline, and when we plan to launch. But a lot of that has been happening behind the scenes and just knowing that we have to wait on a vote first to know what direction we are headed in. Yeah, great question.
Thank you, Pam. I had a question on how many direct teachers is this going to impact? How many teachers does get, is this going to be in their hands? Does that help?
I believe when we were doing the preliminary counts and getting feedback, it was around 1,100 teachers that teach ELA.
To 1,100 teachers would need this curriculum?
That is correct. K-8 ELA.
Anyone else with a question to understand what we're voting on? If with that, if.
Is this questions about the curriculum? Or are you going to have more questions after you make a motion?
We'll have a discussion after a motion. So if you, we want to make sure that we, as board members, know what we're going to be voting on. So as long as we do that, I need, I would need a motion in a second. So is there any more questions? Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, now if I can remember my question. So we, we buy this curriculum. At what point do you assess? How many years, where are we looking at to assess whether this did indeed do what we thought it would do? Because we don't want to wait five years. Okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
My response would be immediately. I mean, we start immediately. And so you have to look at both quantitative and qualitative measures when you are looking at success of both the curriculum, but also in terms of student success in terms of achievement. And so we would be looking early at preliminarily, what are we seeing in terms of anecdotal feedback from our teachers? How are professional learning communities running? What are we seeing in terms of evidence in our classroom walkthroughs and our core attendance? Are we seeing students more engaged? Are we seeing more instruction aligned to the rigor of the standards? Are students able to articulate what those standards are? And then really soon after that, you're going to come into our first round benchmarks with our third through fifth grade students. And then we also have our beginning of year amplify data for our DIBELS, which really assesses the foundational literacy skills of all of our kindergarten through third grade students. So we're going to be tracking that progress immediately. Additionally, we're going to be revisiting it on a consistent quarterly basis, because I say this before, but there is no silver bullet. If there was, every system across the entire country would be using this single-handed curriculum. So it will be up to us to make revisions and tweaks as we go to make sure that it is best needing the needs of the students. And so our plan is to be proactive through this entire journey. But again, this is the floor, not the ceiling. To get, get us to the floor, we can then build and make tweaks and revisions to make sure that there's the appropriate on-ramps for our students to be proficient readers.
Question related to what we're voting on.
Well, I was going to say, I'm, I'm fully prepared so that we can transition to discussion. I'm.
Just want to make sure everybody understands what was in front of us, what we're voting on.
Not to truncate conversation, but to allow for discussion. I enthusiastically move that we adopt this curriculum.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt the curriculum by Mr. Tredaway, and we have a second by Ms. Sescobar. So with that, now it's time for discussion. So now you, the floor is open for discussion on this item. Catherine?
First of all, I want to say thank you to both of you for meeting with us. They met, I think individually with all of us to go over this and gave us the time to ask questions and, which my first question was, did it align with North Carolina standards? Because that certainly helps teachers, and you assured me it did. The other thing I heard tonight that I think is very important is this is a tool to put into toolkit, because the other concern I had is I want teachers to still be able to pull from resources that worked, because not all children learn the same. And I'm thrilled to say that to hear books in hands. I'm all for that. The other thing I see the advantage of this is we do have students that move school to school. And so then they're going to have the consistency of the same program. You also assured me we'd have money for more workbooks. And you also assured me that you were projecting for growth, because as I said, we've always had to run around with new teachers and find kits and get here and there. So you've assured me we're going to have that. And I think the other word I heard that I liked is this is our guide, and it's research-based, and that's important. And also, it's what our teachers want, and they're the ones using it. So, you know, I'll support this program.
Other discussions on this item?
After you all met with us, or Tracy, you met with me, I wrote some notes. So these are some things, along with what Catherine just said. This is a national curriculum, but you all are going to be working to help align it with a North Carolina standard course of study, and that you will be assisting teachers in this alignment, because their plate's already full. Second of all, there is an option for acceleration and enrichment for our students that go through the materials faster, and that you all assured that the AIG department here would help with that, to take that burden off our classroom teachers. I was told that there was not a device portion of this program, K-2. Is that correct?
That, all of these are books in hand.
Okay.
That's right. So not digital. We do not rely on digital devices.
That's wonderful. We need less screen time for our students. So I love that it is text in hand. You promised that you would use this for five years. In two or three years into the program, you won't say, I've got a new curriculum, and you have to throw this one out the door. So five-year plan. And last, I can only imagine what our beginning teachers have been having to do, overwhelming already being a new teacher, and then having to go out there and find these sources for themselves. So I think it's important we get this done tonight, so you can order the materials, and the teachers will be comfortable and ready to use this when we start school next year.
Any final comments before we vote? Mr. Mills?
I do want to thank you for your patience. I know that I can be a pain about this stuff and ask a ton of questions. I've taken up a lot of your time. But you have answered all of my objections. And while I may still have a few reservations, I would caution everybody that's looking at this, that, you know, sometimes the perfect is the enemy of the good. And I feel like this is a good curriculum. I took the sixth grade, second unit home, showed it to my wife, because she was a sixth grade teacher. And she, she's, first off, she was like, this is overwhelming. This is a lot. So one of the things that I picked up that Mr. Fleming said, he said, he talked about putting it in the toolkit, this is a supplement to our already strong teaching practices. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, we talk about consistency across the district and, and, and moving through grade levels. I don't want us to sort of miss the work that's already been done and the expertise that our teachers already have. So when we're deploying this, I really want it to be sort of treated as a, as a tool that's available to them, so that they'll welcome it and want to use it, as opposed to something that's being mandated down on them to supplant something that they're already, that's already working for them, specifically talking about teachers that are getting good outcomes for our students. So yeah, that's my, that's just my main concern, is I want to make sure that we're, that we're implementing this in a way that respects the teacher's expertise that's already, already there. And thank you for everything else, honestly. And thank you for bringing ELA teachers to close the deal tonight. That was brilliant. They were all very elegant.
Okay, board members. So we have a motion that the K-8 English Language Arts Curriculum from Arts and Letters be approved for $2,340,185.87. And since this is an important vote, let's show a raise of hands if you are in favor of that motion. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you again for the presentation. Thank you for our teachers for being here. We've been sitting on our, our chairs here for two and a half hours with, with a 10-minute recess. We need a motion in a second. A motion in a second, but Miss Lancaster. We are in, going to take a 10-minute recess.
Many hours they've seen that they've worked on this and I've seen presentation after presentation, so you did a great job and I'm very proud of both of you. Your leadership was outstanding and I think that speaks to the talent that's here. Also, I want to thank our teachers because it's I always find the irony in it when you say something, they show up and they just perform. They they just perform and they show you how great they are. It's what I see every day. It's what our kids are kids are used to. It's it's always nice when you see teachers come up and talk about how they're from the county. They've gone to the schools here. They invested in it. They're working here. They're sending their kids here. I think that sends a really strong message. So I'm very proud of that. I'm very happy that they were they were as fantastic as they were tonight. I'm not surprised because that's again what I see every day. We just have excellence around us all over the place in terms of our teachers and I really value our teachers and I thanked them for coming out this morning. And I think it's important to hear from them because they are the ones that are dealing with it all the time. And then lastly, it's not it's not missed on me that the board supported the seven nothing. You had a lot of questions. You put a lot of time into it. You put a lot of work into it and I value that. Your questions were good. Your interest was high and you were concerned about the right things. But it was always centered on kids and what's best for kids. I you you won't realize this tonight. You won't realize this in a year. I spent 12 years as an elementary principal. I've been I've been at every level as an administrator, 12 of them as an elementary principal, so I know the value of reading. Sarah can attest to my passion for it and how much I believe in it, that that is the end all be all, that we have to make sure kids know how to read. But what you did tonight as a board collectively, you you don't even know how far you've moved the needle. We're ninth in the state right now. We can talk about data all day long, what scores mean, what 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 the interpretation of that is, but if we're ninth in the state without having the resources and we have the excellence around us in this district, imagine where we were going to be in three, five, and maybe 10 years when you're giving them some more resources, putting some some more tools in their hands so that they can help our students. I'm proud of the board. I'm proud of what you all did as board members and I can say confidently, it was it was a pleasure. Although it's not, I mean, it's not always wonderful. We have a lot of conversations. We don't always agree, but that's fine. That's a healthy tension is good, but you were so invested in the right thing and what you did tonight was historic for this district and I really appreciate and I I value what you did and I am grateful and thankful that you really focused on this and did such a wonderful thing for kids. So thank you so much for that support. It means a lot to all of us. And again, my mind historic in what you did this evening for the Cabarrus County School System. So great job, Board. Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Dr. Kavicki. Every board member here supports our teachers and wants to wants to help them. We're looking forward to some positive results from that investment. So with that, we'll move on to nine point oh three and invite Dr. Sandy Ward to the podium for policies on first read.
Good evening, Board. I wish I had teachers and administrators behind me with these policies, but I will endeavor to bring the pain with my policies. Right, John? That's right. He told me to bring it. Okay, I'm gonna bring it, close out the meeting. Okay, so in March here, we have one, two, three, four, five, six policies on a first read. I did not receive any questions, so I'd like to get right into the summaries if possible. All right, wonderful. So policy thirty four eleven, which is high school final examinations. In speaking with our high school director or assistant superintendent Gordon Palmer, we changed language here just to align with some district practices. Up at the very top, it had a quote on failure to take a final exam may result in a loss of credit for the course. We're trying to be understanding that things do happen with students and we want to be understanding of that fact. So instead of shell, we're going to do may and we're going to be looking at circumstances that may surround any situation. So we want to make sure that we give some leeway to our students. Questions, comments? Our next policy is thirty four twenty, student promotion and accountability. This is something that was actually passed through our state where our credit recovery courses for our core programs, that's in reading, math, social studies, and science, used to have a pass/fail grade at the end, once you've finished. That has now moved to a numeric grade, something that the state has put forth. So we are just making our policy line up with what state statute says. All right. The next two policies, forty three twenty, tobacco products with students, and you'll see the same thing in fifty twenty six seventy two fifty, smoking tobacco products just in general. This really talks about changing the definition, actually expanding the definition of tobacco. I don't have to tell you all the new things that are happening with tobacco these days. And so there's an expansion there so that we can include all of that as we are as we are interacting, unfortunately, with students who are doing those things. So both of those policies really just expand the definition of tobacco. The next one, the next two are technical edits where we look to update legal references in our licensure policy seventy three seventy one thirty. It's a slight change down at the bottom, down in the red. Keep going, keep going, all the way down to the legal references, all the way down. Keep going. There you go, in the red. So those are some things where our legal references were updated. And then also in policy ninety one ten, use and selection of architects, engineers, and surveyors and construction managers at risk. Very slight change at the legal references as well, all the way at the bottom.
Okay, again, since this is a combined work session and business meeting, any questions related to understanding what we're being asked to vote for? If we are all in a understanding of that, then we would need a motion and a second to approve the policies as presented for first reads. Motion by Mr. Treadaway. We have a second, Miss Escobar. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, that all those pass first read. So we will move on to nine point oh four, which is policies for approval for second reading. And again, once these are voted on, they are they become effective, so.
Thank you. So last month, we introduced five policies. Do you want me to read those? Read through them, the summaries?
Just so we have an understanding, just want to make sure we understand what we're voting on.
Absolutely. Thirteen ten four thousand two parental involvement. This policy has been revised to address new statutory requirements for career development plans. And so this just talks about students in our middle grades will have access to create their career development plans and how we access them so that parents now have access as well. All right. So that is that policy. Second policy, on a second read, three thirty two twenty seven seventy three twenty two wage webpage development. And we talked about Title II of the ADA requires school systems to make web content and apps accessible per the WCAG by two thousand twenty six or twenty seven, depending on our population size. So right now, we talked last month, Mr. Carl Sane and our technology and accountability department are already working to make sure that our web content and apps are accessible. Next policy, let's see, I have eighty five ten. Great. And what you'll see here, let's see, updates the duties of the school finance officer based on information in the State Board of Education Policy. And it gives some references there. It added a new section about continuing professional education for Mr. Penn here and making sure that all of our school treasurers are all trained. And it also updates legal references and cross references. In addition to that, Mr. Walters let us know that we want to be very consistent as we call our chief financial officer, not our school finance officer. Now, around the state, you may hear it interchangeably, but here in Cabarrus County Schools, we use chief financial office, finance officer. So I tried to go through and change everywhere where it says school finance officer to chief.
And this is the same policy Mr. Penn talked to us about. That was the only change.
That was it. Next, we have sixty four thirty, purchasing requirements for equipment, materials, and supplies. This was a technical edit that was required. Here, we also talked about just making sure we were consistent with language. This also says chief financial officer, so we want to make sure that we are staying consistent. Lastly, we have seventy six fifty employee travel and other expenses, which is also a technical edit. That is required.
Okay, do we have any questions related on what we're voting on? If we're all comfortable, we would need a motion and a second that the policies presented are approved on second read and they will be effective once we vote on it.
I move that the policies presented are approved on second read.
Motion by Mr. Mills. Second by Mr. Treadaway. Any further discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed, say no. All right, that that motion passes and those policies are approved. So we will thank you again, Dr. Ward. So we'll move on to nine point oh five, which is the Long Range Facilities Capital Improvement Plan. And this is something we do annually and it's presented to the county commissioners at our budget meeting with them. And I was told today that we are ahead of schedule, so if there is some concerns or some adjustments that are made, we do have, we don't necessarily have to approve it today. It can be approved at another meeting. But hopefully, we're all in agreement and we'll move forward. But with that, we have Dr. Bowers and Mr. Louder. Thank you for being here and please go through our, and this is, we've actually presented this to us back in January, right?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
And my understanding is so far what's presented tonight is the same that
Yes, sir. You're right.
Same that the board has already seen back then.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
We just haven't had any discussion on it.
No, thank you for the introduction. I appreciate that. Kind of made the launch there a little bit easier for us tonight. So good evening once again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kavicki. Here with me tonight is Mr. Tim Louder. He is our executive director of construction and planning. And as Mr. Walter alluded to earlier, what we're about to share is our long range capital plan for your consideration and approval. This is identical to the presentation that was shared at the January twenty fifth board retreat. But certainly to Mr. Walter's point, we want to make sure that we're available for any questions that may emerge or any feedback that you may have at this point. I do want to outline briefly some of the efforts that we want to highlight tonight. This is a condensed version, although the full unabridged version, if you will, remains intact and there have been no changes from that. But we do want to talk about our current reality and share that with those who are in attendance and those who may be watching so they have a better understanding of what are some of the conditions that we're currently facing. Want to touch upon the capital planning factors. What is it that certainly goes into our capital planning efforts and our long range capital planning efforts at that and what may drive and or steer recommendations that are brought to you, the board, each and every year? We also want to take a peek at what we're looking at for our capital planning goals. What then priorities do we have? And ultimately, what are some of the previous models and the proposed model that we are bringing for you for your consideration? So just to begin, a few of the highlights. Again, you've heard these before and it really just accentuates many of the things you've heard this evening and in other presentations. Cabarrus County Schools is growing. Our forty day student enrollment this past year was thirty five thousand three hundred and thirty six students. Now, that was enrollment at the time. You hear a lot of figures that are thrown around when it comes to students in terms of population and what we serve, but ultimately, our enrollment are what we like to call our people in the seats, if you will, what we have to educate on any given day when they are in attendance. You think about that. We've grown by five percent in just in terms of our student enrollment over the last five years. And we are projected to grow by another five percent over the next five years. If you think about that, that's almost an additional two thousand students we expect to add by the twenty thirty, twenty thirty one school year. So again, growth has been with us and it will continue to be with us as we move forward. The other thing, too, that we know, we're becoming more diverse as not only accounting, but as a school system. And the diversity is aiding us. It is strengthening us. When you look at the number of unique learners to which we now educate, we've seen an enrollment increase in our gifted learners, but also our students who come from multilingual learner families and also students who have identified as students with exceptionalities. So again, with that becomes ever changing needs for us to be able to adapt so that we can make sure that we are committed to the success of all students. The other piece to this, too, that you'll note is that we've moved traditionally from once upon a time, it was a majority white population of student to now a non-white population of student. Just in the last five years alone, our non-white student percentage has grown from fifty four percent to sixty three percent of our student enrollment. So when we mention shifting demographics, that comes with different needs as well. And it's really interesting to think that we are represented, if you think within our schools, over thirty five different languages are spoken by students. So when we think of being the best in the nation and really establishing an international experience and a first class experience for all, this contributes to that. It makes us stronger.
You know, as we continue to grow, so do our needs. Currently, we maintain about forty four school facilities with about seven million square feet and two and twenty eight hundred acres, twenty three hundred acres, I'm sorry, twenty three hundred acres. Still a lot of property we have to maintain with our staff. That cost continues to go up every single year. Additionally, nine of our schools are over fifty years old, forty years old, and eight over fifty years old. And so as those facilities continue to age, obviously, the cost of maintaining these schools continues to grow as well. We have about a hundred eighty million dollars worth of projects in the over five hundred thousand dollar range. Those are larger projects like roof repairs, HVAC units, that sort of thing. We also have an additional hundred eighty million dollars in projects between twenty five thousand dollars and five hundred thousand dollars. And those are general maintenance projects that have to go there. They're outside of our normal budget, just operating costs because they're just too large to absorb under just general operations. Additionally, we need a high school and an elementary school in the northwest portion of the county. And we're gonna need one very, very soon in the southwest portion of the county as well. On top of that, since COVID, increase in cost has continued to rise. We had about a twenty to thirty percent spike during COVID and it continues to to continue to go up. Right now, just the goods and services have increased twenty five to thirty percent just for us to buy and purchase things we need to maintain our schools. Roofing projects have more than doubled in cost since twenty twenty and HVAC projects are up a hundred and fifty percent. So you can see that those costs continue to rise as we continue to move forward. Right now, new construction is getting very close to four hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. So that's pretty expensive to build a new building nowadays.
These factors really just set the context of the current reality. None of this should come as a surprise to any of us. We have seen this not only play out within what happens with school construction, but just general construction and even our everyday household budget. We see these rising costs, which we have to certainly prepare for and factor in as we look ahead. Now, when we talk about capital planning factors, these are the contributing elements that are really taken into consideration when each and every project is considered for placement on our long range facilities master plan. First thing we have to look about, what's the likelihood of funding being available? Secondly, what's the age of our current existing facilities? And are we better off moving towards replacement? Or are we looking to invest in those properties and those facilities to ensure that we have a longer life cycle assigned to it? What do we have when it comes to school boundaries and feeders? Growth, we certainly have to factor down. That's a heavy consideration with recommendations that we bring before you. We also have to factor things in such as programmatic changes. Do we have to look for additional pre-K classrooms? Do we have to outfit schools now with specialized settings to serve students that we mentioned are hailing from more diverse backgrounds than ever before? What does our school capacity look like in terms of the school itself and the school setting? And then ultimately, where do we have land to build? This is fluid. And certainly, one of the reasons we present this to you annually is we will see change and we will see movement among some of our projects based on these conditions. Sometimes funding may drive where a particular project is. Sometime the land availability may drive where we have to sequence something. But I want you to understand is that what we present this year is based on the evidence that we have available this year and the data we have available this year. And again, we continue to monitor that. We continue to certainly inform ourselves as to what are those changing conditions and then bring forth to the board those recommendations each and every year that are grounded in what we're seeing play out.
As Dr. Bowers just mentioned, you know, obviously, the aging facilities is one of our major factors we have to look at. And this chart basically talks to about the facilities condition index. And basically, facilities condition index sometimes misconstrues some people to understand what it's all about. Facilities condition index is the cost of repairs necessary at that school versus the current value of the school, not the replacement cost of the school, the current value of that school. And as you can see, we've been working very, very hard on those aged facilities. You know, we've got Berryhill's, Cochrane Webb, and our Brown McAllister, those were our three elementary schools that were really the oldest and really had a high facilities condition index. And we've replaced one, fixing to replace the other, and combining one, and actually by building Cochrane Webb. Then we go to the high school, two of our major high schools right now, Northwest Cabarrus and Central Cabarrus High School. Both of those facilities condition indexes are very high. And because the schools cost so much to rebuild, you can see that that's a pretty big factor. You're looking at forty seven to fifty seven percent of the value of that school just to repair it. It's better off replacing the school. As we look at our our growth and our condition of our schools, if you look at the elementary school, this is a map of the elementary schools themselves, you can see the northwest portion of the county. The elementary school red is not good. Yellow is mean, you better be painting pretty quick. And then obviously, green and and blue are are better off. But in the northwest portion of the county, you can see that our elementary schools there far exceed their capacity. Only reason we're surviving there is because we've got a lot of mobile units in that area. But that area is also going to see the highest growth over the next five years as well. So it's almost a double whammy there. We're already full and have the highest growth as well. At the middle school, we talked about that earlier with you, with the addition of Roberta Road Middle School, that really helped us out with our ultimate capacity of middle schools. However, in the northwest portion, again, with that growth being in northwest portion, we will have to expand our seats there sooner than later. And that would always become, we replace Northwest Cabarrus Middle School and expand that for capacity, allowing us to be able to take all those kids you saw in the early elementary school level as they move through grade progression. Then the high school, again, we have northwest and southwest areas of our high schools are growing and well over capacity. I mean, obviously, our high schools are better able to accept additional kids because obviously, we're on a four period cycle and twenty five percent of the kids sometimes are not in school as they move through the cycle and in and out of school different programs. So we're better able to observe, to absorb that capacity. But again, you can only do that so much. And we're going absolutely need to expand our high school seats in that northwest area. And obviously, we'll talk about that with the Northwest Cabarrus Replacement Project.
Yeah, and these are just some of the salient points we've been able to pull tonight to be able to share with you that drive some of the rationale behind the projects you will see just in a moment. But before we get there, we want to talk about the goals. What are ultimately our goals when it comes to long range capital planning? What must we anticipate? What must we consider? And what must always this be weighed against in terms of the backdrop? First and foremost, we want to take a look at what we're doing from prioritizing the needs of the community. What are the community's needs? Where do we see this growth? Where do we see the facilities that possibly might be to be replaced? What are we having in terms of a potential more housing permits to be allocated in certain areas of the county down the road? These are all factors that weigh into the decisions. Secondly, you'll see there, we have to be nimble. We have to be able to look at projects to which, when we need to, can we adapt based on changing factors and based on indicators that can shift dramatically in certain arenas. Once again, you saw the elementary school map when it pertains to utilization. Should we have looked at that about three years ago, it'd be vastly different. So again, we're seeing tremendous demand placed on some of our facilities from a utilization standpoint. So we have to be able to anticipate and adjust to that. And lastly, we want to be able to present this board a sound reason for why the projects were selected and the projects that were identified, but also, too, so that the board can then say, this is the recommendation to then be presented to the county commissioners for future consideration and funding. And our board has been extremely supportive. I can't thank the board enough for what they've done from just a forward thinking standpoint, from a support standpoint, and really from an understanding the true needs of the school community standpoint, and also our county. Our county has been very, very willing to fund many of our projects that we've brought forth, and we appreciate their efforts in that. So this has been a partnership that plays out. And we want to continue to make sure that we inform and educate so that we can say, these recommendations are sound and they are based in the evidence and the data that we see. So with that, we're looking at the priorities that we have for the upcoming year. And those priorities really are just nothing more than just a simple rehash of what we have shared thus far. And that's really to continue to say, hey, we got to focus on not only replacing aging facilities, but we have to focus on deferred maintenance. Again, I spoke to the board and their forward thinking efforts and how supportive they have been with these projects. You see there, the Opportunity School, Mary Frances Wall Pre-K, and then the Replacement School that we have right now, the elementary school that's currently being constructed. Through the board's efforts and the board's support and then the county's funding, we were able to launch those efforts this year and we now currently have those projects playing out. So again, that's helping us tremendously because alongside that, we were able to also get three roofing projects this year and two HVAC projects. The HVAC projects are for Concord High School and for Weddington Hills Elementary School. And our roofing projects that were approved are for Hickory Ridge High School, Cox Mill Elementary School, and Wolf Meadow. And it does not get lost on us, which we can say, we had about seventy six million dollars approved in the projects between Opportunity School, Mary Frances Wall, and the Replacement School. We also eliminated seventy six million dollars in deferred maintenance by also identifying those projects and replacing those facilities. So again, when we speak in the terms of cost of new construction and cost of additional facilities, also operating in the backdrop is a what have we also saved with future commitment to deferred maintenance and or capital projects that quite honestly would have a limited lifespan within these current facilities. So again, we should be appreciative of those those supportive efforts. The last thing we do is want to prioritize areas of the county that are experiencing the growth. That area right now that we're seeing the most significant growth is the northwest sector of the county. There is just no question we're going to need additional capacity up there, both at the elementary and at the high school level. So certainly, that is something that we have baked into this as we see the recommendations for this year.
Last year in February, we came to you, the board, and got this this plan here approved. And you can see the top three items there are currently funded and under construction. The Paris County Commissioners actually approved the top four, but due to some of their constraints in their financing, they were only able to fund the top three. And the fourth one is approved, but not yet county funded. And you can see there's, you'll see something on this list here that changed in different priorities as we go through the next one. But I just want to make sure that Northwest Cabarrus High School is still right there toward the top. And that new elementary school and Northwest High School are still going to be our number one priority for this year. And then as we go into twenty twenty five, some people ask me, which is more important, Northwest Cabarrus High School or the Northwest Elementary School? And there's no difference. They're both one A and one B. They're they're really top priorities because you saw that the elementary school seats are desperately needed. But all that elementary school growth as it progresses through the middle school is going to reach high school before I can get the high school built. And so therefore, that need is also one of the highest priorities. Plus, we've already invested quite a bit of money in the design and the purchase of property for Northwest Cabarrus and it is ready to hit the road as soon as it can be funded. Then we have Central Cabarrus High School that that moved up in the list this year, one because we are going to see some more growth in the southwest portion of the county, which is Hickory Ridge High School. The best way to relieve that is probably to build Central Cabarrus with a higher capacity. Plus, it also has a high index, which speaks to Dr. Bowers a moment ago about aging facilities. We kill two birds with one stone. We get that aging facility replaced and we add capacity that gets us by for several years until we have to have another high school, which would be in southern part of the county. Again, the renovation, I do elementary school in the southwest portion will come very soon afterward because Harrisburg has a lot of development on the books. It's been approved and they are actively constructing there. We don't see it yet, but it's going to be there within the next five years, probably before we can receive funding to build it. So it's going to be behind the curve, even though we already own the property. It will be one of our priorities following Central Cabarrus. Then we do some renovations at the auxiliary services here at the Glenn Center. Right now, we house quite a bit of our auxiliary services over at the Glenn Center. We're looking to try to vacate that facility. It's a high maintenance facility. And by vacating Mary Frances Wall and Highway six oh one, we've been moving those students off that campus and hopefully be able to renovate that. That site is much better suited to offices than it is to a school just because of the traffic on that school. And also, the central location lends itself very well for for having that for administrative services. And then we're looking at another replacement of elementary school. Really haven't named out one yet. It's probably, to be quite honest, it's probably Wolf Meadows. As that continues to grow, that's probably the next one on the list that has to be looked at replacement. And then, of course, the renovation of our Brown McAllister, once it's vacated and those students move back, creating that pre-K center that we've been talking about for quite some time. We're able to get by and do that now with Mary Frances Wall, but there's a much, much more need than three hundred seats we've been able to provide with that replacement at the Old Berryhill site. And then, of course, we talked about the middle school that needed in northwest, obviously going in and being able to demolish a portion of the old northwest high school and come back and build a new portion of that school and then use the newer portions. I did put newer in quotes because some of it's twenty years old, but still, in our lifetime, twenty years is a pretty new school because most of our schools are forty to fifty years old. But that will allow us then to add capacity to the to that middle school that we desperately will need in that northwest period. That's probably more than six or seven years down the road because of funding. Then the Southern High School is on the list. Right now, that's really not, there's no, we don't have any indicators that say that there's going to be enough growth there to support that ten years out. Some people say, well, we're talking Some people say, well, we're talking about that being a replacement for Central Cabarrus, but it's not. Geographically, that doesn't work well. I mean, for the last 50 years, people from the Midland area have driven 15 miles north to Central Cabarrus. That's about 20% of your population. 80% of your population is very close to Central Cabarrus itself, so therefore, by reversing that, you'd have 20% close to the school, but 80% having to drive 10 to 12 miles to the campus, which is probably not a good idea. But that is on the list, and as the population continues to grow, we'll continue to monitor that, and that will obviously move up in priority if that growth takes off in the southern part of the county. Again, we talked about ROSA, not having the full 12th grade for the arts program. And obviously, as an addition, we would like to see, we recognize that there's some of the other priorities that might be a little hard to reach, but it is something that we want to keep on the list to keep out front. And then, of course, the auditoriums at both middle schools. We have four middle schools right now that do not have auditoriums built in, and we just like to think that would be on the list for equity. However, we recognize it still has to compete against all the growth and that sort of thing on the list.
So if you were to take these recommendations and compare it against those factors, which we referenced at the start of the presentation, you look at things such as funding, obviously, that's going to be a key contributing element to this. But also programmatically, what are we looking for for capacity? What are we doing to replace aging facilities? What are we doing to enable to be able to have greater functionality with our schools? These recommendations touch on each of those elements in some aspect of them, such that we're setting ourselves up, again, as presented today, to really serve the best needs and the interests of the students moving forward. And so, Mr. Chair, that concludes our presentation. I'll turn to you.
Thank you for the presentation. Again, like we've done before, questions related to understanding what we're being asked to vote on that we can get into discussion after there's a motion to second to discuss it. So do we have questions related to what has just been presented to us? Ms. Escobar.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanations. So just to clarify, number two and number four makes it seem like it's northwest or southwest, but the truth is, what you just said verbally was, two would be northwest and four would be southwest.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely, based on what we're seeing right now.
Okay.
Ms. Lancaster.
How many people are involved with number five?
So one of the things that that will give us the latitude to do is, with the introduction and the opening of the Opportunity School in the fall of 2026, we will then be able to remove all students who are currently being served at the Glenn Center from that property. The remaining individuals in that building would be in the, I'll refer to it as the newer portion of the property itself. And we do have some Auxiliary Services staff. We have our Technology Services team, our Accountability Team. Our Kids Plus programming is located there as well. And we also have some support staff, Related Services Support Staff, that are part of our Student Services Division. So being able to complete a renovation at the former Mary Frances Wall would allow us to then basically remove everyone, and then we would be free from the property at the Glenn Center. So again, that's about a $30 million in deferred maintenance saving we would be taking off the books.
And you have another question?
So we're going to be voting on this tonight, is that correct?
Well, the option is to vote on it as is, to make an amendment and vote on it, or to table it to the next meeting and have it, sharing some proposals on what you think it ought to look like, and then we would vote on it next month. And my other question here is the northwest, you didn't change the price, it's still 130 million? What, is that changing?
Today, it's 130 million. Every year, you wait, it costs you $5 million more.
It was 130 million last year too, though, right?
Yeah, we took it in consideration beginning now, but we didn't get the funding. So now, we're starting to.
But your estimate is still, your estimate is still 130 million today.
Today.
But by the time it gets funded, it could be more than that.
150 by the time it gets funded.
Do we need to provide, do we need to have accurate, more accurate numbers based on what the funding may be?
We have another funding exercise coming up in the next month with our construction manager, Risk. And we utilize that time to see if the prices have moved much, but we're seeing a 5% escalation per year in construction costs. So simple math tells you it's $5 million a year for every year you delay.
Right, but we're saying, we're saying it's this. That's what we're presenting to the commissioners. If it's going to be more than that, they need to be prepared for that soon.
And also, that really depends on when the county commissioners wish to fund it. Right now, we're saying, I need to fund it today. So that's our price today. I recognize the county commissioners want me to do it, but that's.
Well, traditionally, at the most, we've gotten two or three projects, so. Okay, so everybody understand what we're being asked to vote for? What is the pleasure? Oh, go ahead, Greg.
Have the projections, are they updated? Or are we kind of operating off the same projections that the consultant did when they did that deep study for realignment?
So just to clarify, when you reference projections.
For growth and where we're determining.
Yes, sir, that's great. No, those are updated annually. As a matter of fact, it's two different points throughout the year we update those projections. And that's based off current conditions that we see. We also look at what are the newly-approved housing permits and newly-approved construction projects with residential construction that are taking place so that we have more real-time information available. So that's a great question. We're not relying exclusively on what was done for realignment. We continue to actually adapt those each and every year.
Okay. And I've been watching this long enough to know that everything beyond like one, two, and three is probably very fluid. I am the liaison for Midland, and so the, one of the subjects of their last, most recent meeting was that the leadership was very interested in seeing the Southern High School built. Obviously, you're saying that it's not, it's not required at this time.
No, we have no projections, yeah, I'm sorry. We have no projections that would forecast that project to be on our list within the next five to 10 years.
But considering that this is a very fluid thing, they get their sewer alignment in place, right?
Could change things.
Some things happen now, now the building permits are getting approved, stuff could happen there, this could change.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Not this year.
No, sir, absolutely, yes, sir. So the recommendations we bring this year, as I prefaced, is that it's based off the known conditions that we do have in place. Again, as you mentioned, is that things can change overnight sometimes in the county when it comes to growth, and we're now, some of we're seeing these different pinch points. Should we find that there's another area that has started to have these indicators, which again, different water capacity, sewer allocation, different housing permits being answered, excuse me, issued, we would certainly be, we would be coming back to you with a different version of this in future years.
Sure. And so then also, you know, we look at this, we see things like Pre-K and office space that don't add capacity, whereas that would add capacity, but maybe they don't need it right now. But they still see themselves moving from position seven to position 10 this year, right?
Yes, sir.
And so what would help me, as I'm going as liaison, to be able to give them some sort of idea of metrics of what we would do if they hit certain population growth? Like maybe we don't, maybe we're not going to build Cox Mill or West Cabarrus down there, but maybe it makes sense to build a smaller footprint that has some room for growth later on. Like these are all options that I think we should talk about instead of waiting till it needs a Cox Mill and building that there.
Valid point.
And that goes into another conversation I'd like to have going forward, just sort of viewing the process over the last couple of schools, right? Is, I'll speak specifically to Culture and Web. It appears to me that the design work was completely done because we're reproducing the R. Brown McAllister on that site. And so we didn't really, as far as I can tell, engage the community and bring them into that discussion until the point we could walk them through the school, that we were telling them that they were going, that we were going to build for them, right? So I think it would also help in all of these places where we're talking about building new schools, to engage the community sooner about the type of school, the needs in that area, and the type of school that we're proposing to build in that area, and get some feedback from them as to what they would like to see so that our community has some buy-in.
All right. We want to make sure that we understand what we're voting on. If we have input, that's a good discussion item.
Okay.
But do we want to, we can either, you want to respond? So we can either approve it as it's been presented, we can amend it and make a motion with an amendment, or you can make a motion to table it for the next meeting. All three of those things will engage a discussion. Any one of those three would engage a discussion.
I would make a motion to approve it as is.
Okay, so we do have a motion to approve it. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Escobar, a second by Mrs. Forrester, so let's have a discussion. Now, anyone who wants to discuss, talk about this, please.
So, speaking about the Midland High School, I just want to point out that Mr. Pittman, our commissioner, asked that very question to Dr. Kapicki at their budget meeting, I don't, was that two Saturdays ago? And what was nice about the reaction to his answer, which is similar to what you've just shared tonight, which is that we make decisions based on data. We make decisions based on the needs that exist. And so I was pleasantly surprised because Mr. Pittman is also very passionate about Midland. He thanked Dr. Kapicki for his answer, and he literally said, this is the best answer I've been given. So I do think that they are open to understanding what our needs are, and that's very important to me, to understanding what the commissioners, what their desires are. But also, there was some relief there because I live on the northwest part of the county, and I'm concerned about capping at Cox Mill Elementary, to be perfectly honest. Like there's apartments, they're not going to be, they're not going to be here in two years. They're here now. They are making adjustments now. And if we don't get these buildings up, specifically the elementary, we're going to, we're going to have some really hard decisions to make. And that's not, that falls on us. There's a lot of stuff that we're dependent on the county commission to make decisions about related to funding, but we're the ones that are stuck with, if we don't have the buildings that we need, if we don't have the facilities, we have to decide, how do we handle the growth that we have? Northwest, I just, when I started on the board, when Ms. Freeman said tonight about the fire hose and all the stuff coming at you, northwest was one of those things. And I was super disappointed when I learned that it was off the table. It wasn't even being discussed two years ago. And so, same thing, we took a tour of that high school. We have one of the graduate, or two graduates, I believe, from that high school on our board, from that building. So I think the need is there. We needed it. We need it today. The reality is, it takes two years, I believe, for a high school to be built, three for a high school, and two for an elementary. So this is not, anyway, I just, anything we can do to get this done sooner rather than later is my hope. And I recognize, like we said, the stuff on the bottom is fluid. And again, I'll just, I want to thank Dr. Kapicki because, also in that conversation with Mr. Pittman, he talked about, if you give us all the money, more money, we can build your school, if that's what you want. So it's really, we are so dependent on what the county commission approves for this, that if there are people listening, if you want your high school, if you need an elementary school, if you're concerned about capping, if you're moving into this area, that county commission needs to know that you care just as much as we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Escobar. Anybody else? Ms. Lancaster or?
Well, I do think the county commission cares. I think the bucket of money's only so big. I know them, and schools are one of their top priorities. To piggyback on some of these folks, so after number three, that list gets pretty fluid moving forward, right? I mean, anything after the first one and two or three? Because I've been, the Midland community has reached out to me also, and they're, they're like, their voices are not being heard.
I can, I'm fifth generation Midland.
You are.
I've been there, I've lived there, done that, the whole deal. I went to Bethel School when it was, Old Bethel School, and that was the middle school when my dad, so I understand that. I went there when it was still a high school, by the way, I'm getting really old now. But the bottom line is, as much as I like to see Midland continue to grow, the reality is, data does not support that, okay? At this point, it does not. And we cannot afford to build even 1,000 seats in the southern part of the county when I can only fill maybe 500 from high school. So that just doesn't, that's just, we can't do that at $450 square foot. So we have to just look at that as a reality. Obviously, I hope that does. I hope that area continues to grow, it's great, it's a great community, great peoples live there, understand that. But it has to have the data to support that kind of building.
Dr. Kapicki, did you want to respond?
I just think Mr. Lawler made a good point there, and I think Dr. Bowers has alluded to it earlier. I think what we have to keep in mind is the, how fluid this document is. So next year, this could change. I mean, I don't, I think your point, Ms. Lancaster, is accurate. I think one, two, and three are pretty solid. But I think, you know, next year, if the, if the winds change, this can change as well. So, and I can tell you that we had, as recently as this morning, I talked to Dr. Bowers about this, we looked at data again to make sure we were on spot, we were on the same page, we were looking at the right stuff. And, you know, that's how current, how up to date we are in terms of looking at the data and the information that would support this document.
Thank you. Ms. Freeman. Catherine.
I just want to say I'm glad to see Northwest High School back up there because that community has been very patient, because they've been promised and it's been bumped down, so I'm glad to see that. Now, going back to number five, when we, you say relocate the staff at the Glenn Center and be done with that, so what happens to that property?
We, I've met with a group right now that's going together to try to find another use for the high school itself, the old portion of the high school. They wish to make that a performing arts center and a few other things to go with that. And there's a pretty good group that's going there, about 15 people. We've met with them now three times, and they're trying to pull together their funding to be able to repurpose that facility for that. And that's outside of our purview, it's outside of our funding mechanism. All we have to do is vacate the facility and offer it to the county for them to be able to transport it into their ownership so they can do whatever renovation is necessary to do it. But that's, that's the purpose of that.
So the county owns it?
The county will own it. The school owns it right now because there's no debt on it. But as we, once we decided we're not going to use that anymore as an educational facility or office facility, then we offer it as surplus, but the county has the first option to do the property. They may wish to take it, or they may wish to sell it, or they may wish to transfer it to some other ownership, which they have done in the past, like Mount Pleasant did that and transferred it to another entity, like once the county said they didn't have any use for it, that sort of thing.
So we don't get to sell it?
No, ma'am. Once, once we decide it's no longer used for a school facility, it goes to surplus and the county has first right of refusal.
Ms. Freeman.
Who, who is on the Concord City lead? Are you, oh, okay.
No, well, Catherine is the lead, I'm just the alternate.
Okay. It is my understanding that North Carolina does not have impact fees, correct?
Yes, ma'am, they do not.
How many other states do? Would you know offhand?
I do not.
I know South Carolina does. And part of this, and excuse my reference, but stuff runs downhill, and it ends up being here, that we have to deal with how do we get it done because of decisions that were made further up the ladder, so to speak, like the growth in the community. We have to then fund it, and it leans on our lap to do that, and no money comes with those decisions, is what happens. So my, my point would be, in Harrisburg, we had a city council at one time that approved 11 developments. And before they were even, the first one hit the ground, 11 developments went in. And none of those developments had to put any money towards a school, and they, all they had to do was put in a 250-foot turn lane. I don't, somehow, we need to fix this problem that those who are impacting the schools and the growth need to be paying for it, some of that. And I guess that goes to legislation, but until the legislation can be passed, then we need to have the cities control their growth, the municipalities, because it's not just a county problem. The city passes the growth, and then the county has to, so they keep kicking it. They make a decision, but the paying for it gets kicked down to the lower level, and that's where we are now at the lowest level, having to fund a lot of this. And we don't even have the money. So maybe you can put a bug in their ear or something, but legislative-wise and municipality-wise, then we need to.
We have worked pretty closely with most of the municipalities, and we have seen that slow a little because the municipalities have hurt us, and they ask us, every time there's a development comes up for review, they'll send out a document, and Fran will run the numbers and determine, you know, what is our capacity, what kind of yield will come from that development, and whether that capacity is there, and we can make that statement as part of the record. It doesn't necessarily change the vote, but at least we're on record that this is going to impact us negatively to this extent and have it. So they have been more recognized that, and at least taken consideration. And some developments have been turned down in the recent past because of that, because it just wasn't capacity, but still, there's a lot of growth taking place.
Ms. Escobar.
No, I think that's a really good point, and you explaining it, because those are questions that we get from the community. People don't understand who does what, and I even had that conversation with the chair of the county commission, because people think they have, they're making the decisions, they're not. It's the cities and the towns that are making these decisions, which is part of the reason why I talked to the chair of our board and said that I think we need to have a larger role in attending those meetings, and so that's, each of us have been assigned, and we've been attending those meetings with the idea that even just being in the room, maybe they'll think about schools when they're, when they're making these decisions, so. But the reality is, is those red dots are red dots today, and they're not, they're not tomorrow, they're right now. I see them, I mean, I literally see the human beings walking down the street or in the supermarket or whatever. So if we can prioritize this and get this to the county commission to see what their reaction is to this, the sooner the better, I think, would be good.
Mr. Tredaway.
I think priority number five has been understandably below the radar because of, it impacts fewer kids, especially after the Opportunity School replacement opens. But I know when we toured two years ago, we went over there, you were with us, Mr. Ladder, I think, I was amazed at how much, that's a money pit. I mean, I mean, just, just heating and cooling, utilities, I mean, just everything. From a fiscal, I just want to point out, from a fiscal responsibility perspective, we're, we're pouring a lot of money in that place, and it's going to be even more pronounced, it seems like, when it's not even housing students anymore. So I just want to highlight that. It understandably and rightfully is under the radar of when kids are impacted, but that's, that's, we're throwing a lot of money into a hole there. And I will say this, too, one other variable that's not on that chart, but impacted by that chart, is anybody that drives 601 South is going to look forward to us moving Mary Frances Wall. That's a, that's a vehicular obstruction almost all times of the day.
Yeah. Mr. Tredaway, I appreciate that comment, because what we have historically done is when we leave a facility, we just put people in it. We don't plan it, we don't renovate it, we don't try to maximize the opportunity to use it. You walk into the Glenn Center and two people sitting in a classroom is an office, you know, it's just not efficient, it doesn't service, service well. Like you said, it's a very expensive space for people to sit there, just two people in a classroom-sized office trying to share that. So being able to go in and renovate that to create usable and efficient office spaces is very much necessary, rather than just say, carte blanche, well, we moved out, so let's move in, and then all of a sudden, you still have the same issue with not being a very efficient space.
But anyway, it's, it's in process, Mary Frances Wall Center is under construction, that'll open up, so the likelihood that that building is going to be empty for a while is pretty high. I personally, I think we need to tweak a little bit of this. I think, you know, the county, as they, as they've been talking about, they only want to go with a GO bond, bond for funding our capital needs going forward. You know, what is included in that, or what can they do, you know? That's, that's a concern. That elementary school, maybe they can get, give us 50, if they can't get us 130 million for a high school, at least we can get started, because I'm with Pam, we're going to be capping these schools. I mean, I talked to the staff, they're overwhelmed with the kids that keep coming there, and there's more coming every day. So we've got to, we've got to do something, or we're going to, we're going to have, we're facing that now. So even any of these solutions aren't going to solve it. I would like to see this thing tweaked a little bit better as far as, you know where it's going to be in the northwest portion of the county, so let's say northwest portion of the county. You know, you're saying Central Campus is going to add capacity, well, how much capacity? Well, we should put the number there. Number four should say southwest. And the issue with the southern high school, we already have land, though, that's, that's, we have that land, so it's a known where that's at, so it doesn't need to say in the southern part of the county, it can say in Midland, or if that's incorporated in Midland, so. I do think we should tweak it to make it more, the amounts here, to make it more realistic, but that's just my thoughts.
We certainly could do that. Obviously, Central Campus, we're looking to go 600 more students, go from 1,200 to 1,800.
So 600 is the number?
One of the things I do want to certainly share with you, and I think everything you shared, Mr. Walter, is certainly valid, but again, the fluidity of this, too, we want to make sure that we recognize, you know, I think that's the piece of caution against, is that the minute we submit a number, that number then becomes one to which, again, folks would have an expectation to which is honored. So, and I think that's what I would suggest, is that as we go through this, as we continue to survey and we continue to identify, the more that we can inform and provide the board with what are those updates, what might that look like, could have an influence on where exactly some of those things are.
Maybe we present it differently, where we can show the estimated additional costs every year, so.
If that is the request of the board, certainly we understand. Ours, again, we would suggest, the more fluid we can keep it, the better able we're to adapt and to be as nimble as possible to respond to the changing needs.
But I understand that most of these items here are there just because that's our need. The actual thing that we're able to get funded is very little here, so.
Absolutely, you're exactly.
Or we are talking one or two, switching between the two of those, so.
Well, our, our recommendation is, is one and two, not one or two. But again, that's from our department.
Well, that's, that's our need, because that's where the growth is.
Yes, sir.
But the reality is, we got to rely on them to fund it, so.
Understood.
What can they fund?
So I would just.
Ms. Escobar.
I would just argue that, you know, the other night in the Finance Committee, you had asked Mr. Penn about getting numbers as soon as possible, and so that we can get a heads-up from the county commission where they're leaning. Operationally, for the operational budget, that's not going to be possible, but tonight, we could do this with the capital plan. And so I don't disagree with some of your suggestions, but at, but at the heart of this, it's not really changing that much, and so, again, in an effort to get a read on where the county commission is, because ultimately, they're the ones who are going to have the say, I'm going to reiterate the motion that I made, which is to approve this tonight.
Any further discussion on this item? All right, let's.
Yeah, I just want to say, our job is to present the needs. Our job is not to fund it. Let someone else do that. Our job, we have no taxing authority in North Carolina, so our job is to present the needs, and I feel like this represents our needs.
Okay, so are we comfortable, ready to vote on the motion? Okay, so the motion before us is to approve the Long Rage Facility Capital Improvement Plan as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, we've, so this will go to the county in April.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much.
Moving on to our next item. We've got 9.06, Wolf Meadow Elementary School Parking Lot Repair Project, Mr. Chuck Taylor, and I guess this is going to be similar to the one we did in Mount Pleasant, right? Is that?
Yes, sir. I'm here tonight to request that you consider and approve Farabee Contractors as the lowest responsible bid, and also as a favorable bid, they came in under the budgeted amount. Do you have any questions?
Questions from board members?
Is this as exciting as floors?
Yes.
Okay. I will just say that I have driven on the Wolf Meadow parking lot, there, there are a lot of potholes, it is very difficult to navigate, and so this is very needed, and I appreciate you pulling this together.
Thank you. And this will replace all of the asphalt at Wolf Meadow, so it will be like a complete replacement.
Okay, so, and we worked with this company before?
Many times.
Okay, does everybody understand what we're voting for? All right, so we'll need a motion and a second to approve the Wolf Meadow Elementary School Parking Lot Repair Project as approved for $333,940.32.
Send move.
Motion by Mr. Tredaway, second by Ms. Escobar. Let's vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? That motion passes, and that was our last action item of the night.
Thank you very much.
We do have a need for a closed session, so.
I know.
Fortunately, going to stick around just a little longer, but we will say, say goodnight to our listening audience, so. I will need a motion to go into closed session, and do I need to read this, William?
That's a ten question.
Do I need?
Yes, sir.
All right, so this is the recommended motion, motion, and second, that the board convening closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A3, including cases involving Hunter Hoskins Conyotes and Katherine Gillage as guardian ad litem, and to consider confidential personal matters pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A6. Somebody make that motion for me. Motion by Mr. Tredaway, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Mills. All in favor of going into closed session, aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so we are now in closed session, and we will say goodnight to our viewing audience.